Recording in progress.
Good evening. We're going to begin the June 11, 2024 meeting to order. It is 6:34. We have everybody present except for Council McBride and we have Council Bordelone who's walking in at this moment. Up next is Calendar and Communications. Council Merritt, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Not tonight.
Council Patrino, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I do not have anything I'd like to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rusk?
Um, no report.
Thank you. Council Jones?
No report.
Council Gieske?
No report.
Council Parker?
No report.
And I also don't have a report. So we're going to move on. Approval of minutes. 2024-573 to May 28th, approval of minutes. Council Parker, would you like to take that?
I make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 28, 2024. I so moved.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones. These were given to us in a separate packet because I believe there were some updates made to it. It is the minutes for May 28th. Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any hands or anybody notating if there's an issue. We will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? It passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, new business. Raunch 2024-574. But this is 517 to 529 Gold Star Options Agreement Assignment. Would you like to come up to the table? Good evening.
Good evening. We got a few of us here at the table tonight. With me, Eric Callahan, Town Attorney, Page Bronk Economic Community Development Manager, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development, David Orr from Orr Partners. I'm going to quickly go over a brief little presentation on kind of what we're here to talk about tonight, but we wanted to kind of give an overview on... John, if you want to bring up that first presentation for us, please. Kind of give a little history background on the 517, 529 Gold Star Highway property, kind of where it is from a town perspective, then I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Orr, who is going to go through kind of about his company and we'll go from there. So first, again, really, the property reuse update. So one of the reminders, this property was not, say, your typical excess property. This was a property that the town got through a tax foreclosure. And we wanted to go over the project timeline as well as some updates on it and then just kind of talk a little bit about the general parameters of, you know, the concept update as well as the assignment of the bona fide developer. Next slide. From a timeline perspective, we've been working on this project for a few years. Back in 2016, you know, we could kind of take you through the steps between, you know, planning commission date 24 referral, appraisals, the RFP process that we went to and back in 2019 when we first entered into an option agreement with PJNA. A few other kind of iterations of where things are. Working with some potential developers that things didn't quite pan out to where we are here today. Next slide. And just to kind of give an overview of what's ours, what is being brought to the table. So the town parcels on this map are shown in the orange about almost, you know, almost 12 acres in size and the two PJNA properties that they brought to the table that'll partner with us on this up on the screen. This new proposal that we're going to be looking at tonight is approximately 390 units. The other big changes that are happening in here, some of the concept update, one of the big requests from staff from planning was to realign the access road to Tollgate Road. Again, Mr. Orr will be going through that a little bit, but some of the big benefits to the town are outlined here, such as... And here we go with... Oh, yeah. Thanks, John. Yep. You know, some green space, natural buffer, meets all the zoning. And, you know, here is your updated project design, similar in concept and scope to the previous one. There's actually one building less. And you'll really see, you know, one of the big differences is the lining up with Tollgate Road. And again, Mr. Orr will talk about that a little bit. Next slide. Kind of comparing the two sites, the concept on the right is the one that the council had approved a couple of years back when we were working with a previous developer that had six buildings. You can see where the drainage, again, this is in early stages of design and engineering. A lot of things are very similar in concept and layout to what it was. And, you know, kind of the two pieces tonight that we want to talk about. So one, the assignment of the option to the preferred developer. And, you know, PJNA may assign this option agreement to a bona fide developer whose principals have experience in developing multifamily development projects. Mr. Orr will talk to that in a few minutes. And they've been doing a lot of multifamily development around the country, but again, he'll get into some of that in the near future. Next slide. And then the other piece for the council to be looking at tonight is updating your kind of approval of that concept design. So those are really, say, the two big things that we want to be talking about tonight. John, if you want to switch to that other slide show. Any questions on kind of the parameters, the background and, you know, where we are, where we're going before we hand things off to Mr. Orr?
Council Bordelone?
First, just a question on the process because if you're asking questions now, unfortunately, we only get two chances to speak. So are we asking two questions under this section and two under the other, or how are we rolling that out? I just want to...
We get two questions...
So then I'll hold comments. So unfortunately, we can't ask at this stage, so I have to hold to the end. Thank you.
All right. David?
Oh. Good evening. Should I speak into the microphone or just out loud?
Awesome. My work. Okay.
Well, how's everybody? It's good to see you. So my name's David Orr with Orr Partners and we're here to talk about the Gold Star Highway site that we intend to purchase and develop with your approval. And we're here tonight to seek your approval that we're a bona fide developer and that our concept plan is acceptable to the community. So a little bit, if I may. There we go. Getting there. I'll just talk to you a little bit about our company. These will be the people that would interface with you. There's myself, my son, my two sons are in the business. George Gleason and Ryan Baron would be the five constituents that would interface with the community. We've already had some really good discussions with Deb Jones and Tim at the Building Department about, you know, some of the parameters associated with developing here. Sorry, I'm getting used to your clicker. So, you know, why Orr Partners, why are we here? So we have a significant amount of apartment and mixed use experience. We've developed nationwide. We have a proven track record on our projects. We provide complete transparency and we have a company-wide social mission for our company. We've been in business for 35 years. We've developed about 40 million square feet of space, total of 3,500 residential units, apartment units. We build commercial, industrial, and apartments. And I think we've built in 35 states across the United States. And I think the thing that we're most known for in this part of the world is we are developing Shipyard at Groton. And we've been there for close to 20 years. This is the most recent project that we finished. This is the final assembly building for the new Columbia-class submarines. We also developed the Quonset Point Campus. We've probably done a little over $2 billion for the work up there, all associated with the nuclear submarine assembly facilities. And pretty soon we'll be building, taking that expertise to Australia and to England for our trilateral agreement for furthering it, the mission of the submarine. This is the Quonset Point Campus and everything in white we built. And so, and just to be clear, we're project managers for Electric Boat. Electric Boat owns all their facilities. They pay us a fee to provide service to them. But the apartment buildings, the apartment development, we own. All right? So I just want to be clear about that. And the Groton Shipyard you're all familiar with and the stuff that's in orange is the stuff that we're currently working on for Electric Boat down at the Groton Shipyard. A little bit about our residential experience. This is Central Arlington. This is a 366-unit project in South Arlington, Virginia. It's very similar in terms of number of units. The layout's different. This is a little more of an urban design project. But I'm just going to walk you through quickly just some of the slides of it. It was a recent completion that we did. We filled this project up in 11 months, 366 units, during COVID. During COVID. So it was a real great success story for us. And you can see the kind of quality. We really like to build state-of-the-art gyms so people can maybe not pay for their health, you know, their gym club membership and use our gym instead and be welcome in our community. We built nice club rooms and amenity spaces that I'm walking you through right now. And this is a sample of one of our apartments. We tend to lean in towards a more clean, modern aesthetic on our apartment projects. This is Riverpoint Project in Washington, DC. We took the old Coast Guard headquarters and converted it to a 480-unit apartment building. Again, you know, the scale, this is one of the best of that of reuse building in the country for the National Association of Home Builders. And just some slides of that and its amenity spaces and some of the apartment units that I'm scrolling through quickly for you, just to give you a sense of the quality and the scale of the things that we do. And again, another gym that was on steroids. And then now more in keeping with some of the stuff I think that we're contemplating here, the Garden Style Apartments project, this is in Orlando, Florida. This one is also in Orlando, Florida, 314 units. And this one's in Destin, Florida. So I'm just walking you through some recent examples. Raleigh, North Carolina. This is in Rockville, Maryland. Again, full absorption in 13 months. So we really try to build to the community that we're within. And this last one I'll show you is Joyce Motors. This is the last remaining historic Texaco gas station from the 1940s remaining in the country. And rather than tear it down, we're restoring it and building it into an apartment building. And it's going to be a coffee shop inside the apartment building. So we like doing fun things like that and, you know, really celebrating our community. And so finally, this is the project that we envisioned for the Gold Star property. It's five buildings containing roughly 75 units. There'll be an elevator in each one. There'll be a clubhouse and a swimming pool with the types of amenities that I tried to resonate with you on the slides. We've adjusted the entrance so that it will line up with Tollgate Road. That was an important thing for the community was to have that continuity. So that comes at great expense. There's a lot of rock there. We're going to have to do quite a bit of blasting. If you've driven by there, you'll see it's about 40 feet of rock. So we're going to bite the bullet and just take care of it, just to bring that entrance there. And we've also paid respect to the Appalonia Land Conservancy in the back. We've brought our buildings forward and we're trying to really respect their property there because we know how important that is. And so with that, I'll conclude and just say thank you for this opportunity and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Have any questions from councils? Council Merritt?
I have just one question, if you know it off the top of your head, and it's probably just a random wild question. The cost of rent per unit?
It's going to, it's going to range somewhere, we're going to build studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms?
Correct.
As a general statement, right? And so the rents are going to be somewhere in the $1,500 a month range on up to, say, $2,400 to $2,500 a month?
No. I guess that's the current market price. I'm not overly enthused about it, but if that's the way the market's going, so be it. And off the wall, over a period of time, have you had any mold conditions with those?
No. So we take very careful steps to prevent, you know, when, when we had the outbreak of Legionnaires' disease in this country several decades ago, what that did is it changed the industry. And so for like our duck work, when it's delivered to the job site, the ends of it are sealed, all right? And it's been sanitized inside. We keep it that way until we install it. So we've taken special measures to prevent water infiltration and mold. And we have consultants on our projects who specialize in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Before we go any further, Council Gieske, would you like to put the motion on the floor from page 11?
Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the request for confirmation of signability of the option to purchase agreement for 517, 529 Gold Star Highway to a bona fide multifamily developer. So moved.
Second? Moved by Gieske, seconded by Rusk? Okay. Do you have any further questions? Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the, through the mayor. Welcome, Mr. Orr. Thank you for being here. I certainly have been involved with this project for a while, so we've gone through several different iterations of it, so...
I understand.
We're fairly familiar with it. On your properties, do you continue to own them or do you sell them off after you've completed them?
No, our philosophy is long-term hold. We don't like to sell properties. We work so hard to get them approved and do them right. And in some jurisdictions, it takes an extraordinary amount of time and difficulty, and so we try to keep them.
Do you see any particular challenges in this other than the blasting of the rock, which is, I know it's on the left-hand side, but...
You know, I would say, you're talking about this site specifically?
Yeah, this site.
You know, the challenge that we have right now honestly is industry-wide and it's two things. It's hard costs and it's interest rates. And interest rates have tripled, you know, in the past couple of years and then hard costs went up about 25%. And so that forces us to, you know, really watch the costs as much as we can because given the question about the rent, the market's only going to allow us to charge so much in rent, right? And so we have to be very mindful of costs. So the big challenges are interest rates and costs. There is a lot of rock on the site and, but we've accounted for it and we're going to try to do a balanced site. One of the things that's resonated with us is how important water quality is here. And so stormwater management will be very, very, you know, important to us.
Mr. Reiner, through the, through the mayor, or maybe Mr. Orr, you, we're combining four properties here, I believe. So there's two the town owns and two that are here private? Is that correct?
Correct.
Has that had been, has that been the same all along?
Yes.
That those four properties would come together?
Yes. Yeah, so when we initially issued the RFP, it was for the two properties. And when this particular preferred development partner was picked, they also brought to the table the two properties.
Okay. And do we have any issues with the private, are they kind of all, everybody's joining together? Is that...
Yes. No, it really, it makes an ideal, the massing of the land together makes it a better project.
Okay. And final question, I asked Mr. Orr, your construction times seem fairly aggressive or, or short, you know, 11 months or something? Is that, what do you do to help move, to help that forward?
So to be clear, that wasn't the construction timeframe? That was the time for absorption of the unit, meaning that that's how long we leased up all the units?
Oh, it took 11 months or...
11 months during COVID. The construction period here, really, it's probably going to be somewhere between, I would say 18 months is at the end of the, you know, 18 months or so is what the construction timeframe will be here because it's mostly above grade, right? Other than the pipes and things that we put in the ground, the foundations. And when we go below grade with projects, they tend to take longer, but this is mostly above grade. So it should take about 18 months to build it and we expect the same kind of outcome about less than a year to absorb it.
Kind of do it.
Yeah.
And do you, are you using local labor for this?
Yes.
Or where's that coming from?
No, we will hire local labor and local contractors and it'll be local.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Patrino?
Mr. Orr, through the mayor. How many one bedrooms and how many two bedrooms are you looking at?
We typically have, if there's, in round numbers, we'll say there's 400 units. Typically, 65% of the 400 would be a combination of studios and one bedrooms and 35% would be two bedrooms. Now, what, we will study the demographic more thoroughly as to the market, the community as a whole, what Groton's needs are and try to build to that and make adjustments on our quantity based on that.
And that would change the quantity as well if you're, if you're making, taking two ones and making them a two-bedroom?
It might. It might, it might. If there's a need for family units, right? As by way of example, we would build more family-sized units that had more bedrooms.
All right. And how many, how many floors are we looking at here?
Five.
Five floors?
Five stories with an elevator in each building.
Outstanding. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, thank you, Mr. Orr, for coming. When do you expect to be open, ready for the first person to rent? Like when can the first person move in?
We think the process is going to take roughly a year for us to get in the ground from now. And then about a year to build it, 18 months to build it, like I said. And that's when the first person would start moving in. So you're looking at two and a half years? From now, from today?
So that's, we'll say, we'll say that's January 2020. I'll say January 2027 for my notes.
That sounds about right.
Yep. And then, why Groton, through the mayor? Like, why did you choose to develop in Groton?
Well, so...
You said you developed in 35 states and why, why us?
Well, a couple of reasons. Number one, you know, we built a supply and demand and there's tremendous demand in the market here in Groton and there's a lack of housing here. We also, as you know, I explained to you, we've been building for Electric Boat for 20 years. And so we have an understanding of the growth of that company and the growth of Pfizer and the other businesses that are located here. So to answer your question, it's really supply and demand and the lack of competition.
And then a question for Director Reiner, through the mayor. You had previously stated that you estimated that Groton needed 6,000 more housing units to meet the workforce and the needs of the town. Would this 400 additional units, would that cut that need down to 500, 5,610?
So the need right now is about 6,450. So this would take us down to about 6,050 units?
We love changing times. And then a question through the mayor to Mr. Orr. How are you financing this plan? Are you fully funded or are you self-funded now that you've been in business for 35 years? Or are you seeking accreditation from banks or other funding sources?
Yeah, so what we typically do is if you take 100%, we typically can, of the cost of a project, we can typically borrow 60% and the other 40% has to be through cash. And that is a combination of our money and then we use limited partners, institutional capital. So, and just full disclosure, we're involved in the Triton Square project. We're providing some services up there and so similar participants up there as would be here.
Well, through the mayor, thank you, Mr. Orr, for coming. Where are you from, by the way, through the mayor?
Where?
Yeah.
So I was born in Dayton, Ohio, and I grew up in Montclair, New Jersey. It's where I went to high school.
Okay. And then thank you for coming this evening.
I used to come up here and play hockey and you guys would kick our bus.
You know, through the mayor, Quinnipiac University is, you know, national champions in hockey. Very Connecticut proud.
My son went to Union though and they did, they did pretty good.
They do do pretty good. Well, I thank you for coming and I thank the manager, Director Reiner, and the attorneys for getting these proposals together and also you, Mr. Bronck. Hey, yo, back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Bordelone?
Thank you. Through the mayor, I guess, what is the value of the properties that we are kind of shutting off here? That's my first question.
So we had done an appraisal on these and the offer on those, let me just pull that number up on the purchase and sales agreement, goes around $260,000 or so. Give me a minute and I'll find that number for you. If you want to jump to your next question while I'm...
I'm fine because if not, I will, I'll miss something and we get limited time. I apologize.
The sale price of the property is $228,000.
And what was the appraisal on that?
That's on page 10.
I just want, some people want it on the record if I, I'm just asking...
In paragraph four, it says $240,000.
Thank you for putting it on the record. So my other question is five stories. What I don't see here is what that's going to look like viewing it from the street. When will we see those images? I see an aerial view here, but, you know, I think folks have been asking me, you know, what's the perception going to look like? And that, that has not been captured in this. That's my question.
That's a good question. And, and so what the process is that's been laid out for us is that we'll submit, assuming you approve us tonight as the bona fide developer, we would then go ahead and prepare a detailed site plan that includes elevations and we submit that to the town for approval.
I guess for me, it's kind of hard. I think, you know, a lot of the other approvals I've seen, I've seen the site. So I'm just curious, I guess, to the attorney and to the, you know, Economic Development Department, what, wouldn't that be something we want to have tonight? Because if I'm approving something, it's hard after I approve it than then to not know what that site's going to look like. So my, that's my question.
So right now, comparison, looking at an aerial view of the old concept to the new concept, similar building style. He's actually, Mr. Orr is using the same architect as was used on Triton Square. So it's an architect that knows the area, knows what our kind of design feel is for the property. Tonight, really, the big ask is the signability as a bona fide developer. That's the big piece and whether or not you want to give the blessing tonight of a, that the project design is consistent with the previous design or if you want to hold that off until after you see they make submission to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's really up to the council and how you want to move forward with that piece.
Thank you. As a person who's big on conservation, advocacy and development in our area, but also making sure we protect the natural state and the environment, I think it's very vital and important that we're looking at carbon neutral aspects. So, you know, like my house is not fully carbon neutral. It was built in 89. Eventually, I will try to bring it up to the best code possible and leave it to somebody else after I invest all the money in it. What are you doing in this property to help cut down on that footprint in our community? Looking at ways like solar lights and ways to cut down because we should be, my vision, I can't speak for everybody else, is that we are looking at ways, when we're building new buildings that are going to last 50 to 60 to 100 years, we should be investing now. So where, where do you fit into that?
So the industry as a whole has really, has made, I think, great strides in sustainability. And it used to be, Madam Bordelone, it used to be, you'd say 20, 30 years ago, where sustainability was really not affordable. And we've made great strides in that. And so we employ sustainable initiatives throughout our projects. And so just as a general statement, we, we as a company are sustainable and employ sustainability into each and every one of our developments. I can't give you the specifics here because we haven't designed it yet, but it will be part of the fabric of the development of the project. Is it sustainability?
Yeah, I, I hope to see that. I hope to see things like solar lights, things that dim at night, like in the parking lot where things aren't readily being used, ways to decrease the footprint and the, the demand on our area for energy and things in that nature. My other concern is the five stories. You know, I, I think three, four, traffic, people have complained, you know? And again, I'm speaking as an elected official, not what I want, but I'm also... not what I want, but I'm also here to, to serve the people, and these are the concerns in that area. I also spoke up openly about, you know, you talk about what the need is. I have a son who's active-duty military, is one of those people that you're targeting. He's stationed on the USS Virginia. A lot of them can't afford a lot of this.
Congratulations for that.
Yeah, thank you. Also, there's the concern with a lot of people who are losing affordable housing right now, that artwork, there's this, this drive in this, I'm going to lose my time and I'll come back later, that we are so heavily invested in this disposable income of the Navy, and we need six thousand units. We have people that are from here that aren't even living here because they can't afford to stay any longer. And I am concerned, because my push is, before, when you put this forward several years ago, and it got pushed, and then moved down the pipeline, just the same thing with Triton Square, things I was asking for then was having sliding income, where you'd have mixed-income housing. How do you plan to address that? Because there are people that can't afford those prices that deserve to stay here in Groton.
Well, it's like I said to the previous answer, I mean, we have to really build to the demographic. We have to study the community as we develop our units and our pricing for it, and what composes this project. So that includes the sustainability, but most importantly, we're going to look really hard at the rents and what people can afford to pay. I mean, look, if I build an apartment, it's too expensive, they're not going to rent it. The last thing I want to do is have an empty apartment, right, and have an empty apartment building. So this is a really serious thing, and we study very strenuously. We hire third-party consultants to help us understand the market, all right, and try to build and build to the market, and build that where it's affordable for the residents at large.
So my question is, are you leaving any of them as affordable housing a certain percent of your units? Because this is a large number of units. Are you leaving any of them as affordable housing?
Well, I think, I think, I don't know what, there isn't really a specific affordable requirement here, but as a general statement, right, we have to build units that are affordable. So, look, let's just cut to the chase. At, at Electric Boat, by way of example, okay? An engineer makes seventy-two thousand dollars a year, and somebody who's welding, okay, or a pipe fitter is going to make twenty dollars an hour to fifty dollars an hour, depending on their tenure with the company. We have to, we have to build apartments that they can afford. That's the bottom line for us.
Yes. Well, I appreciate that observation, because I think this big grow, grow, we need this big cheeky kind of, you know, hipster kind of home for, it's boxing out the locals. And I'll take my next turn another time. But I thank you for your answers.
Well, I'm not seeing any more hands. So I guess we will take a vote.
I'll put mine up. I was waiting for first time. I'll take my second turn.
Hey, Counsel Bordelain?
Thank you. So, I apologize about our, our process. It's-
Oh, it's okay.
It's very strict.
Point of order?
Your point of order?
Decorum.
Agreed. There's no need to apologize for the process that this council has approved. It has been approved by the council.
Point of order?
Please refrain.
Point of clarification?
Point of information.
I believe, Madam Mayor, I believe she already spoke at the beginning.
That was, I would take that as a point of information.
Okay.
Thank you. Continue, Counsel Bordelain?
Uh, thank you. I was just simply saying that it's harder to speak when you have to kind of cut and pace, so that's what I was apologizing, not, no decorum at all, just trying to make it so I can speak. The concern I have is overwhelmingly, people are, the, the community that I speak up for are the people who, like you said, there are people there that aren't making six figures, and that's the misconception of what's coming in. We need affordable housing, and there's a lot of people going elsewhere with EB that are, can't live here, we're being boxed out. You know, it's vital that we find. And when you look at models out West, folks are doing things where they're coming in, and this was somewhat in the plan two, three, four years ago, so, but really, what, what I feel we need is a developer to come in and say, you know what, I'm building three hundred and something units, here's my profit margin, I'm going to make sure that a hundred of these units, or a certain percent of them, are going to be in that lower income, that I'm going to hold for that. And what they do is, they might, might, you would never know anyone's a little bit lower income, but maybe when you step inside, it might be different countertops or different amenities inside. That's a model that Groton does not currently have, and something I've been advocating for, for Triton. I also advocated for that when the first process of this came before us, that, when it, when it switched, we need something stronger. We need something that is meeting the need of what the people that we want to attract, but we also need to retain. So those are my concerns. And the, the scale, what's the traffic going to look like in that area? Blasting rock, I, as a conservation person, I am concerned about that. When you start blasting rock, you increase cancer rates, you increase exposure to different types of things being on a ledge. So I guess, you know, those are my questions. Like, I understand you have a profit to make, but I think if we're selling a land as a town that we got because someone couldn't afford to keep the land, to me, it feels, and I speak for myself, that we should be making sure that that piece is in there to make sure that affordable component is lockstep in that contract, and I don't see that in here. So I guess to Mr. Callahan, what are your thoughts on, you know, how do, how do we, where's our insurance at what point? So if we approve this tonight, and then later we get this visual robe dimension, where's our chance to back out if we have to? Can you bring me to that?
Well, you already have a contract that the town council has approved, and there is language in the contract, it's in section three, that the town council has reserved the right to approve the concept plan. And there's also language that says the town council reserves the right to approve the site plan after it's refined and prior to it being submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there are, there is language that we inserted in this contract to, I believe, address concerns that you're raising.
Well, thank you for that, through the mayor. I know that some of these things were written before. We've had some other issues. So for me, I just hope, these are my hopes, and I, I might speak for myself, we have twenty-one seconds. Our community's suffering. We're coming off the heels of COVID. We're coming off the heels of many things. We have people being boxed out over here currently, coming, pleading to us for housing that a developer's coming in, buying up, and selling off the land over there, and it was more of affordable. We need to make sure that we can keep the people who want to live here, here, and they deserve equal and fair access to good-quality homes. So I challenge you with that, and I, I look forward to seeing what you bring, and, and from the environmental standpoint, and I thank you for your time.
I, I appreciate that, and I think you'll be pleased with what you see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Russ?
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Orr, for coming here tonight, presenting this. And thank you for being a developer who has developed a lot in Groton. I appreciate what you've done at Electric Boat. It's nice to have somebody who has been kind of tested here and proven that you, you're a committed developer here. I want to also say thank you for looking at the water and Apollonia, and for understanding that we need a sliding scale here, and that we may need housing for all levels. I don't really have any questions. I think most of my questions were answered, but I just want to say thank you for choosing Groton.
Well, that's very kind of you. And I will tell you, you know, you saw that we build, you know, in thirty-five states, and, you know, I've been to a lot of these types of hearings, and some of them are a little more colorful than others. And we've also had different receptions from different communities that we try to build in. And I will tell you that the, in, in all sincerity to each and every one of you, that our, that the community here has never been more welcoming. We've never had anybody more welcoming than the community here. And it's a testament to the people I'm sitting with here, and to Depp Jones, and, and, you know, and to Tim, the building official, and just the way that they've been so accessible to us. And so the first question I ask when I come into a community like this, when I'm going to be building something that's, you know, different than what we've been building at the shipyard, which is more of a controlled, you know, secure environment, is what does the community need, right? And the answer was housing. The community needs housing. So that's why we're here. And then the second corollary to that was, was the water quality, and how important water quality is to you as a community, and how important stormwater management is, by way of example, and how important Apollonia Land Conservancy is. So these things resonate with us. And the reason why we're successful is because we listen. We listen, and we employ those things into our development. So thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. Will you consider using union contractors when you develop?
So, we would consider, we're going to, what we do, as, as you've heard, you know, several of the council members talk about tonight, is affordability. And so, we competitively bid everything. And if it's union or non-union, we're agnostic to that. We don't, we don't care. We just want the best value for the project. So if it's union or non-union, we're, we're open to anybody bidding it. And, and, and like I said, one of our slides is we're transparent, and we make sure every bidder's, it's a fair playing field, and by doing it that way, we get the best in pricing.
Okay. I think that, those are all my questions.
Thank you. Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a couple of statements, after a couple of my colleagues have made some comments. My colleague, Counsel Russ, asked about using union workers. I would advocate using union workers, just because Connecticut is a very proud union state, and that is part of the community. And then my second one is on affordability. Yes, we need affordable housing in our community, but we also need six thousand, four hundred units, as Director Reiner had previously stated in my last term. But we can bring down the cost, we can gradually bring down the cost of rent with inflation if we add more development. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and thank you for your time. Again, I yield back.
Thank you. Counsel Pacina?
Thank you, through the mayor. I don't even know who I'm asking this question to. But what is the tax revenue now, and what will it be in two and a half years when people are moving in?
Can you repeat that?
What is the tax revenue on those four properties right now?
I got you.
And what will the tax revenue be when the first people move in, in two and a half years?
Thank you.
So the tax revenue now on the town-owned parcels is zero. On the privately-owned property, I can get that number for you, but it, it's a small number. Once this is completely built out, for example, we are estimating that Triton Square will be paying somewhere around one to one-point-two million dollars a year in taxes. Triton Square's three hundred and six units. If this is approximately three hundred and ninety units, I think we could probably add, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent or more to that tax revenue number. So that's a substantial increase in, in tax revenue. So that's not assessed value, that's actual tax revenue coming to the town and build out.
Not to mention all those people buying stuff in Groton.
And when we make these estimates, we like to be more conservative in our evaluation of these. It wouldn't surprise me if the numbers are a lot higher, but I don't want to quote, get quoted at a much higher number, and then it's a little bit off. So I'd rather shoot low, and everybody's pleasantly surprised when it's a bigger number, once the tax assessor goes out there and does the work that she does.
Thank you very much. And my, my last thing I want to do, I just want to chime that union bell one more time. We really would like to see a lot of union workers.
Yeah, we're building union in Quonset right now.
Quonset?
Okay. So let me, just for my own sake, we went into a contract with P, an extension on the contract in March of twenty twenty-three for the, an option to purchase agreement with PJ&amp;A. Eighteen months puts us at September of two thousand and twenty-four. So we already have approved all these things. We've sent out to RFP. We've already given the requirements, what we would like out of this project. The council has already reviewed renderings, discussed the watershed area, all the things that we would like as, as a council. And it's happened over numerous councils now. So what's going on now is, because we're under contract, we're looking to, are we, we're replacing PJ&amp;A with OR?
No, PJ&amp;A is still there, so we'd be replacing AR with-
AR with OR?
Yes.
Thank you. And the thing is, like, once you send it out to RFP, and you have people that have bid on it, and you've come to agreements, usually you cannot change that. We can request, some of the councils are requesting some things that they would like to see for the community, but I fully understand that we already have an agreement, and that to change things in the agreement would be a breach. So I understand that, and I would hope that, as you have stated, you're going to do your market study and come up with what our community needs are. Because people typically wouldn't come in here and do business or build something if they find that our community doesn't have a need for it. Or, so you're, from what I understand, most developers, when they're investing millions of dollars, are going to actually figure out what the need is. So I appreciate that. And also, this project still needs to go through, like, planning and zoning, and wetlands, and all these other things, right? So once we have this under contract right now, and it's replacing AR with OR, the option for a purchase agreement expires in September of two thousand and twenty-four. Will we possibly need an extension on that as well?
So that is a possibility. They expect to make a submission to Planning and Zoning in July. I think also around that time, we'll probably come back to you, once there's that refined final plan, to get council approval on the concept design. And at that time, we could be talking about either then or shortly thereafter, maybe a short extension to that contract. It's not the timeframe of the town that we're, is worried about, as it is the OSTA permit, the, the traffic kind of curb-cut permit from DOT. That could take a little bit of time.
Okay. And then, looking at the rendering, I don't think things have changed that much. I mean, actually, I sort of like the design layout better this way than, which is in our, our packet, which, trying to look for the page that had the previous layout. I think this, it might be on-
I think it's page thirty?
I don't know if it even has a page number. Yes, page thirty. I think this is more of a, it feels a little bit more community on, on some of it. So I like the new layout. So I appreciate that. And I know that there were questions of a previous council, and I know it wasn't a requirement, but they had come and said something about potentially putting in a dog park for the residents. So that would be nice, probably for the residents. And I'm just going to continue.
Yep.
And we will continue to go through our current process for development, and the language has been put into, into our process, I guess you'd say, that you will come back to us before the final sale is, and we actually sign off to sell the property as the final sale. Is that correct, Attorney Callahan? It's like, that's the process?
Well, so there's, I guess-
After they go through their agreements, like Planning and Zoning, you know, they get their approvals from Planning and Zoning and Wetlands, and they have all these things. And right before we're ready to sign on the dot to sell, they have to come back before us, so we can see it for one last time, to make sure nothing has totally changed outrageously.
Right. So, so back in two thousand and twenty-one, PJ&amp;A, PJ&amp;A's development partner was Lennar, and then, and then it was assigned to, I think, AR, and now the proposal is to, to OR. Back when this agreement was signed, a conceptual plan was approved. And section three of the agreement says that the, the purchaser can make immaterial modifications to that concept plan without further review or consent by the town. If it makes modifications that differ from the plan, materially differ from the plan that was approved in the past, then they have to come back specifically to the town council and receive its approval. And then there's a process. If you feel it doesn't comply, there's a process for how you notify OR that, here's the things that we think are deficient, and there's an opportunity to respond. So in that sense, they do have to come back to the town if there's a material modification to the concept plan. I, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, in essence, but there was a, I thought it was, they had to come back to us, or maybe we changed the policy afterwards, to say that you have to come back right before the final sale, to make sure that the councils can see that there is no great changes being made compared to what they had originally told us after going through Planning and Zoning.
The only, the, the other thing that I see is that you, the town council also reserves the right to approve the site plan after refinement and prior to its submission to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there are, there is language that was specifically inserted in this agreement, where if the plan that was originally proposed to the town by Lennar, when it was the development partner, changes, you know, materially, then you've reserved the right for them to come back before you as a council and approve whatever may have changed. may have changed.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Because that was sort of important to some of the community members, to make sure that what we approve actually goes forward in that. And I know some things can change through planning and zoning, so we wanted to just have a last look before signing on the dotted line, I guess.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that concern was if the plan changed through the planning and zoning process. If, you know, the tree types change for something in a buffer, that's probably a pretty, you know, insignificant change. But if, instead of five buildings, there were 12, okay, that's a pretty significant change.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more hands. Let's take a vote on item 2024-574, 517-529, Gold Star Option Agreement Assignment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll see.
All right. It is seven to zero to one. That passes.
So one further question, you kind of along the lines of what Mr. Callahan just brought up. So, you know, one of the areas in that agreement is if the council feels this plan deviates much from that previous design, you can either ask the developer to come back with more details, or you could also approve, if you think it's generally consistent with the previous design, that is something that you could approve tonight, and ask that they come back, you know, at a further time, if there's any other change. So just looking for a little guidance from, you know, what the council's looking for in the future. Because the plan has changed a little bit in the number of units. There's one less building now. So, you know, what's the council, I think, do you have a preference coming back once, prior to submission to Planning and Zoning Commission?
I think we've already voted, so it's sort of hard to put something now on our agenda. If we had got us before the vote, we could have put that in and made it amendment. But I think after we voted, that I think it's now going to have to come back on a future agenda.
Okay.
Would you agree, Mr. Burt? Unless we suspend the rules and add it?
I don't even know if the will of the council would like to have that discussion tonight, or if they would like to come back to show the differences from the previous renderings to what the new renderings are.
Well, you reserve the right. So if you don't put it, my, I would think if you don't put it on the agenda, then you've foregone that right. So I think it's, the rules say the mayor and the town manager decide the agenda. So I think ultimately, we would discuss and see if that has to go on. Otherwise, it is waived, so.
All right. Well, I'd like to see what, I can ask the consensus of the council if they would like to come back down to future agenda, or if they're good with, so if we don't bring it back to a future agenda, we're basically saying we're okay with the removal of one building?
For now, going to the planning and zoning is submittal, and then if they make any substantial changes, they would come back.
Okay. So would we like this on a future agenda, or would we like to wait, to see if there's any changes even further down the line? Counselor Merritt, would you like this to come back to our future agenda? Or would you like to wait and see how they do in planning and zoning, and see if there's any changes there?
I'd like to wait and see what zoning and planning has to say.
Okay. Counselor Bordelain?
If you could just clarify, because I'm unclear. They sound very similar to me. So are we omitting one without the other? I mean, couldn't there be a combination where you'd like it to come back, no matter what comes from planning and zoning? I guess I'm a little confused.
I believe so. I mean, it can come back just to say about the one building removal, and then they might have to come back another time if something went through planning and zoning. Or do, my thought is, wait till planning and zoning, and that will show, we can do two birds, one stone.
I think either way, it should come back. I mean, it is a deviation, and I think what was approved is was stated, so.
Would you like to come back before it goes to planning and zoning, or?
I think it should come back before, because I still can't even see the aerial, I can't, I only see a square box top. I don't even know what it's going to look like. So that's, I mean...
Thank you. Counselor Pacino?
I'd like the two birds with one stone. Yes.
Counsel Russ?
After planning and zoning, please.
After planning and zoning?
Counsel Gieske?
After.
Counsel Parker?
After.
All right. So it seems like we have a consensus, just to come back. After you get through planning and zoning, we'll see what changes are happening compared to where you were, not in tonight's presentation, but the one prior, the changes.
So only if there's major changes after planning and zoning, you want to see the design back?
No, we want to see the design back, period.
Okay, after planning and zoning.
Yeah, because there is one building less. Compared to last time we were approved at, is that correct?
Yes, since the last time.
So we'll wait till after they get through planning and zoning, and we'll do, but we'll see everything else at once.
Point of information?
Your point of information?
Would this comply with the public hearings and things, since it is a deviation and a change? I mean, some might be more for it or against it. I just want to make sure we're covering all that as well.
The public hearings actually focus on the land itself, not particularly, especially at this time, when this went through the process, is do you want to sell the land or not? And it does comply with that, is my opinion.
But let me ask, is it, is it, as I'm describing it correctly, it can come back after planning and zoning, and we do the two birds, one stone, and basically see if there's any changes in planning and zoning, as well as the removal of the one building? Is that correct? Or should we do the removal of the one building prior to them going there?
I think it's prior, because one of the things Mr. Or needs to know, that the council's generally okay with that format, before he goes and spends a lot of money finalizing the engineering design.
Okay. I sort of get the, from just hearing the vote, my consensus is that they just want to come back later, because I, from what I'm gathering, I can't speak for everybody, but then I think they might be okay with the one less building, and that they're willing to just see what's going on after planning and zoning. But I can't speak for any of the counselors. Or else, we could just put it on the next agenda, and we'll have a very quick presentation, and we'll take, you know, and we'll have discussion on it, and we'll go from there. Do we have room on our next agenda?
Yes.
All right. How about that?
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, up next is 2024-378-32024, Neighborhood Assistance Act. Counselor Jones, you want to take that one? That's on page, I think, 107.
2024-3-3...
Good night, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
-378, 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act Motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposals for Thames Valley Council for Community Action TBCCA, Groton Public Schools, and the Riverfront Children's Center for the 2024 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act NAA. So move?
Second.
Move by Jones, second by Gieske. Can we get an update on what's going on with the Groton Public Schools in relation to if they happen to get this, and as well as the RTM appointed money to them in their budget for the same item?
Sure. I did talk to the, to the state about this program, to one of the managers of the program. The, anything spent this year in advance of potential award of the grant is reimbursable. And in the chain of emails with the superintendent, I believe, the board chair, and then with the IT director, they did indicate that the money would come back, be submitted back to the town.
And they have to get an outside partner, is that correct?
Right.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation to make?
I don't have a presentation per se. As the council's aware of the program, we have three applications that have been provided to you. I've explained previously, this is a state program, and the state requires that the municipality is a pass-through. We do not grant the funding ourselves. The funding basically is handled through tax credits, and the state ultimately makes the decision. The business partners provide the financing to the program, to the applications that are provided and awarded by the state. Ultimately, the town must require, must provide these applications by the deadline of July 1. The state takes several months to actually do the review, and ultimately make the awards. I think that's the nutshell version of the overall program.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay, I guess we will vote on this. Number 2024-378-3, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is 2024-111-4, Additional Early Voting Locations. That is on page 108. There is no motion. So is this just for us to have a discussion here tonight on?
Yes, because if you were to do anything, the decision would have to be, if you were going to add one, it has to be made, I forgot what her timeline is, but it's coming up soon.
Okay. Counselor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on June 4, we held a hearing on this topic. Every person who came out stated that they did not feel a necessity, a need for a second polling location. I think it's wonderful that we have one polling location that is on bus routes. While I would love to have multiple polling locations, it has been definitely stated by the people that it is not financially prudent, and not, not specifically necessary. So I would not be in favor of moving forward with a second location, in light of the fact that we have one that is accessible to people. I realize that not everybody has vehicles in this community, but it is open, can you remind me how many weeks before an election? Two weeks? So two weeks before the election, and it is, again, on a bus route. So I would be in favor of not moving forward at this time with a second polling location. We can always revisit this as necessary.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. From what I gathered from all the folks who spoke on this last week, was the amount of money they thought would be spent on manning this additional polling place, if we choose to use it. The state is getting, giving us all the equipment for free, right now. This may not be free later on. The only cost to us would be money transferred from one account to another account, to pay for our own IT people to install the equipment. We're not spending any money to man it unless we feel the need to. So it could stay there and not be used, and we don't spend another dime. I think we should go ahead and put a second one in. Don't have to use it all the time. There may be a time we want a second one, and we ain't got it. So I'm, I'm in favor of putting a second one in.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
I can agree with Counselor Pacino. I also feel that it's our one freedom we have, is the right to vote. And as it might not be as cool or open right now for folks to assess, and maybe they don't feel they need it. But I think future generations down the road, this early voting is going to take off. And we're not sure what the numbers are going to be. With that, there have been, in other states like New York, where they've had early voting a little bit longer than we've had, and they've had machines fail. And they've had to use their backup machine. What is our plan if that was to happen, and then we're not in compliance? I'm in agreement that I think if the state is going to help us now, let's get it in. Let's have the backup station, let's have the backup equipment. And then if something was to fail, we have a secondary system. And if we ever have a big election or any other thing, we would have the systems available to us. So I guess my question to the town manager is, what would the cost be? And if you could just reiterate, what our responsibility would be per the state?
As Counsel Pacino mentioned, I think it's basically IT. However, if you're thinking the city building, we have to get their permission in advance. I'm not sure if we're going to have time to do that by the time you file. I don't think we're going to file until they actually signed off. So we're running kind of out of time. So I'm not sure that location will work on this. It would be their staff, their IT staff, not ours, that would do it. We have to run that by them. Because our union rules are, IT aren't going to be there working at their location. So it gets a little complicated with the city.
Right. So, I mean, we've talked about this now, ever since the voter register came out. So if we haven't asked by this time, then, then that shit may be a sale. Then I can respect that. But I do think that we have an opportunity here to get a second set of equipment. And so then we better rush to the occasion, in my opinion, and seize the opportunity. So where can we put one on this side of town? We have time to decide that. It's our buildings, our staffing. So I think if the state is going to pay for that, then let's, you know, again, I've seen it where different screens and different pieces had to be moved in the middle of elections, because stuff failed. And once it fails, I just, I guess the question to the town manager, once we get it, we are to maintain it, is that correct, at our cost?
I believe so.
Right. So if we have a chance to get a second set, and our IT guys that are already here doing our man labor hours, are able to be a part of facilitating, facilitating, putting one in, let's get a second system. I mean, you, we, we have to, you know, there could be a flood, there could be a fire, there could be damage, there could be anything. And having another system ready to go on a different location, I think is key. So that's my question. If it's a town hall annex, if it's somewhere, because that stuff, my understanding, when I read the state website, if one was to fail, we can move equipment, as long as we have it, you know, reinstalled. Is that correct?
I would imagine, yes.
Right. So to me, that's second set of tires. I mean, why wouldn't we want to go with it? So that's my thought. I can agree that maybe we only need one up and running to staff and pay, but I think if we have the chance now, while they're invested in paying and helping us, let's get them. So that's, that's my thought. So I guess the question to the council is, where? And I guess the town manager, where? Where would we put it? And that's a simple ask tonight.
Point of, point of information?
Do you yield your time?
He can answer the point of information, I'm fine with that. I'm not going to...
Then you're done speaking.
Oh, that's, that's, I didn't know the rule. So I'll finish then. Thank you. So we should find a way to figure out what we can do. Does it have to be installed, is my next question. Is it like, on delivery stalled, or do we have a year to install it? Do we have any other verbiage? Some other questions?
I don't know. I'm not the one who's involved in this.
Yeah. So we really do need to get that information. I think we need to get it fast. Because it's, I think it's pertinent to know those, those key factors. Those would be my ask. I mean, it might be that we sign on that we want a second system, but we might not have to install it until, there might be a date. And what is that date? We don't know. Thank you.
Point of information?
Point of information?
If I'm remembering correctly, and I asked this of the registrar before we had the public hearing, the registrar decides the second location, and we do not decide the second location. So...
And your question?
My question, I, my question is, is, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. All right. So I think we've been fully educated by the registrar. And what I saw on the public hearing evening was the registrar, as well as many of the staff that work in that office, who work for our town elections, came out and stated that, at this time, they'd only like one location, and they'd like some time to be able to figure out the needs in the future, and not at this time. They want to be given time to make good decisions. So I'm not, I would just like to go with one location this year, and give them some time to figure things out. And once they do, we're supposed to be doing this, I think, almost annually now. We can take this up once again next year. So I'm, will be in favor of one location at this time. Counselor Bordelain?
Thanks. So I guess the questions that I'd love to get from the town manager, or from somebody through the, through the mayor, through to the town manager, through to... through the, through the mayor, through to the town manager, through to the registrar is, does it have to, if we agree that we want a second location, does it have to be manned this year? Or could it just be up and coming? That yes, we see a need down the road. Because if the state is willing to pay for it, I can respect what the registrar or the workers are saying. Maybe this year they don't want to man it. But if the state's willing to pay for it, and we don't have to man it this year, why wouldn't we, why would we wait to think about it later and then have to pay out of our pockets? So that's my question. So I wouldn't want to miss that window of opportunity if it, so if that information, I will follow up with an email, and I'll also send one to the state. My question is, what are the rules and guidelines behind the implementation? It might be that we are foreseeing that we will need a second one, and we don't have to have it manned. It might just be installed. And if that's the case, if we can install it without having it manned, and if we don't feel it needs to be manned, that's a win for the town. With a little bit of IT investment, we have a system that's worth, we don't even know what it's going to be costing in later in the future. So yes, I can agree that what was stated, that they're not ready to man one, or they don't think we need two fully manned. But I don't want to lose the opportunity of a fully funded software system and implementation as a backup. And then later find out, oh my gosh, we need one, and now we have to pay full throttle. So I guess the town manager, those questions that you could find out and get back to us.
I think you could reach out to the registrar and ask those questions independently, and unless this council as a whole would like, Councilor, I mean, Town Manager Burt to reach out for all of us, and we all want to know.
Point of information?
Because.
I still have time?
I'm still answering your question.
I didn't know you were answering that.
Yes, that's why I'm, because the town manager reports to the council basically as a whole, and if we're giving him direction, it should be from the whole council, and that kind of question.
So my understanding, I guess that's a little new to me. I mean, that we're not making a voting decision, we're asking for clarifying information, and never in the past have we ever, as a council, had to. If we had something we need a little bit more information on, a public citizen could ask for clarifying on what the process was. You don't need a consensus. It doesn't, just because you get the clarifying information, you don't have to implement it. But I'll, I'll do my own due diligence.
The registrar of voters does not work for Mr. Burt.
It's fine. I will contact the state myself and find out what the ramifications are on it. But it would be great if it could be presented, because it's not presented here, as to what that means. So I can agree that we don't want one fully up and running, but I don't want to pass up on an opportunity if we can't. So if the town manager is not able to do that without a consensus of the council, I will contact myself up to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions. Does anybody want to put a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
Motion?
That we implement, we, we put two polling stations with one manned for this upcoming election.
Motion by Bordaline? And seconded by Pacino. All right, I'll make amended motion to have one polling location. Motion by Franco. Seconded by Rusk.
Point of information.
Your question?
Is this the polling location that's currently located in the community?
That is left to the registrar to decide locations, and I'm sure that's where it would be.
Okay.
It's already set up. It's already set up. I'm sure that's the location that she has. Because we cannot make decisions on where the locations are. All right, so we will take a vote on the amended motion first. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Say it merit. Rusk, Franco. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
Jones, Gieske?
I, wait.
I didn't hear your vote. I'm sorry.
I did not.
I didn't.
I vote yes.
All those in?
Opposed.
Opposed? Good gosh. All those opposed?
Aye. Aye.
That passes five to three to zero. All right, so we will take a recess of the meeting, and we will go into the town council special meeting. It is 7:49. And we will call the Groton Town Council's special meeting agenda for June 11th, 2024, to order at 7:50. All are present except for Counsel McBride. All right, on to new business. We have 2024-378-4, 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that on page two?
Yes, thank you. Item 2024-378, 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act, resolution to approve the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals for Thames Valley Council for Communications, Community Action, sorry, TVCCA, Riverfront Children's Center, and Groton Public Schools. Resolve that the town council hereby approve the proposal for TVCCA, Riverfront Children's Center, and Groton Public Schools for the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Second.
Read by Russ. Seconded by Pacino. I don't see any hands, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, 2024-111-5, additional early voting locations. So I would say in the blank, we write in one location. Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that on page three?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2024, PAC 111, additional early voting locations, additional early voting locations. Resolve that the town council approves the need for additional early voting location for the state and federal primary elections to be held at one location.
Second by Franco.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Point of information.
Your amendment?
I'd like to put that we would have two locations, but only man one this election. So two systems with one being manned.
Yes.
Question, the rules requiring things to come out of COW before council, before it's passed the resolution form, if it's a significant change, then it has to, it can't be made on the fly at that point. So I question whether that's diverting enough from the one location to not be eligible going back through the COW?
I would agree.
Point.
That, do you have a?
Point of information.
Your question?
My question is, is the resolved says the need for additional. We don't need additional because we already have a current location for early voting. So do we need, the mayor, Mr. Burt, do we need to fix that verbiage?
You know, you did not even have to do a resolution if you weren't opting to go to another one. I mean, it's a simple change, so, you know, it's not a big deal if you take out the, I don't think much matters. It's not going to the state. You're just expressing your, your interest in not expanding.
All right. I would also have to say that the amended motion would make it so that it, it would not be valid, because it would have to go back. It has to go through COW to get to town council.
Point of information.
So I'm striking the amended motion. Counselor Pacino, your question?
Should my motion have been set to zero location? Because with zero additional locations? We already have one additional location. We're looking at zero additional locations at this point, I believe. Does that sound right?
We're supposed to make a decision if we want to have an extra location or not. This is something that we're supposed to vote on to say yes or no. So what we're doing is taking what was in the COW and basically just shoring it up in the town council to say that's what we definitely want. So I understand the wording of it, but Town Manager Burt is basically saying, it's fine. We're just saying we're having the, the early locations at one location. That's all we're doing.
Point of information?
Mr. Burt, do you have?
I do take his point. It is awkward the way written.
It is very awkward.
Again, you don't have to do any resolution. You only have to do something if you're going to make a change. But if you're going to do a resolution, it is awkwardly written. If, you know, it does look like you do want to add an additional one. It's confusing that way, in which case you almost want to vote no if you don't want to add an additional.
Resolve that the town council approves the need for?
It's very confusing.
May I have a motion on the floor? Make a resolution that the town council approves the current location and does not need to add the additional.
All right, you have, I have to write this down if you're.
Okay.
So is there a way to fix what's there?
That the town council approves the current location for early voting and?
As the sole?
As the sole early voting location.
Point of information?
Hold on. So let me just see if I have this correct. Resolve that the town council approves the current early, early voting location for state and federal primary elections as the sole location. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Is that an amended motion?
Amended to, yes.
Amended.
Second.
Amended by Parker. Seconded by Pacino. All right, so was there a point of information?
Yeah, I just was going to ask, like, obviously that would be the location that we would go with. My question is, couldn't we just add on there and seek information from the state as to an unmanned second set of equipment? Just to know, like, like, and it's a simple email to Vendetti or any of the registered voters to find out, because they probably have the answer? I mean, it just is a simple ask. I, that's all.
I think if there was a, if we can do it, man a location, which from what I understood, Registrar Vendetti said she has no location chosen, and she doesn't know where to go right now. And if she can figure out a location, and I don't know what her timeline is, that she has to respond to the state, and we can request funding to set up a second location, that can come back to the council, I think, depending on the timeline that's necessary. I know we are on a timeline.
Right, and so what I was asking, and so my question is, it would just be a simple ask on the end to seek information for obtaining equipment for a possible second location, even though it's not going to be manned. That's a simple request. I think it's fair and germane. It's, you know, we're still only manning the request. My question is, the request that people asked was for one to be manned, but they didn't, the question was never asked about obtaining equipment and being unmanned. That's all. That was what I was looking for. So could that be part of an amendment, or would that not be germane?
I think that question has been answered, that we said to reach out to Registrar Vendetti and ask her questions, and that this can come back to the council on a future agenda if time, if the timing is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My concern with having an unmanned equipment is integrity, because you do have to have somebody watch it. It has to be locked up. Depending on where you put it, it has to be locked, and it's got to be protected by the registrar of voters from both sides to ensure the integrity of the equipment, because we do not want any issues. So as they spoke last week, they were not interested in doing a second location, nor did they provide any information on a second location. And they did provide us information on how much it would cost, and how many numbers, how many people voted early, and they don't have the numbers right now. They were, wanted to wait until the time period to review everything, and that's in our packet from last week. So I would go back on page 10 and look at the packet again and review the numbers that they provided to us. We don't have the numbers to have a second location at this point in time. So I'm happy with the one that they requested, to keep it where it is and just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordaline?
Just to clarify myself again, I saw the numbers. I watched the video. I agree the cost would be probably not warranted this time to man. My request was not to man. My request was to look at obtaining secondary equipment, which I do understand that it needs to be secure and all of that. When we talk about cost, what I'm trying to do is secure equipment that may be already funded by the state, if we can get it within the timeline, and then they can seek a location if needed later, and to have backup, to not have a cost to the town should our equipment fail. But yes, I can agree what was stated previously, that the numbers are in the packet, which were thoroughly read, and I agree at this time, to man stations would not be applicable. But the cost to obtain equipment, to me, in my opinion, would be fair and germane, and actually in the long run, be a cost savings. So that was my request. Not to man, to seek to obtain the secondary equipment for a future location, shall we need it, or need backup equipment. So just wanted to clarify that, to make sure people knew that I, yep, I knew exactly what the number stated. I'm aware that we don't have the current numbers yet, but we don't want to lose out on an opportunity when the state's willing to help get that equipment at this time. So we're, even though we're, we're not able to foreshadow what will be needed later, it's good to be thinking down the road and be looking into what we could possibly need and have on hand. For the person who's very familiar with New York elections, as I have family there in early voting, they've had equipment fail, and a whole district had to be rerouted to another early voting station because they could not get the equipment in time, and they didn't have the backup. So if they had the backup, they could have switched things immediately, and it could have ran smoothly, and people would not have been disenfranchised by their location of early voting. So that was my request, but I agree, we don't need the staff to man it at this time. I'm sure we can find a senior place at somewhere if we got equipment that was next to no cost to us for startup. So that's, that was my request. But yep, I can agree that we don't need to man it. So thank you.
Thank you. I am, maybe I misheard at the registrar, but it wasn't that they're giving us equipment. The state's not giving us equipment. They're going to reimburse from the line going into the building. It was the line. It was, it wasn't, that's the equipment they're talking about. So we have to have a location to be able to get the line into a building, which that's up to the registrar, and from what she told us, she's having a difficult time trying to figure out a location at this time. So I did not hear of it, they were going to give us like polling machines or anything. It was going to be the line into the building. So maybe I misheard, but that's what I understood it to be from hearing the registrar. So we shall move forward with the motion on the floor, and we'll take a vote on the resolve that we approve the current early voting location for state and federal primary elections as the sole location. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Bordaline, are you voting in favor of this?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eight to zero to zero. Okay, so we will adjourn. I take, entertain a motion?
Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion by Gieske. Seconded by Rusk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? I mean, oh. I mean, oh, opposed abstentions? All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. We are adjourned to eight oh four. We will be going back into the town council committee, the whole, at eight oh four, and at this time, I would actually like to take a recess for about 10 minutes or so.
You know that I'm television?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back from recess at eight twenty-two. Up next is two zero two four dash three two four dash one Pleasant Valley School Property Request for Proposal. Councilor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Um, yes.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. We have to do the.
Regina, Regina.
We're on to Councilor Merritt. Would you like to take that one on page one oh nine?
I do not have that packet with me tonight.
Okay. Councilor Parker.
Yes, ma'am. Two thousand two, two thousand twenty-four dash three twenty-four Pleasant Valley School Property Request for Proposals and make a motion to recommend a resolution to refer the RFP to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the RTM. I so moved.
Second, Kathy.
Moved by Parker, second by Kathy. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight we're going to.
Want to introduce yourselves?
Ah, yes. Certainly will. So John and Paige, you know, also with us tonight is Corinne. Corinne's our new Economic Development Specialist. She joined the team about a month ago and has about twenty years of experience doing private nonprofit public sector work focusing on creating prosperous places for people and businesses to thrive. A little bit of a further background, she, her undergrad was in communications from URI. She got a master's in planning from the University of Utah and really has been focusing on kind of bringing communications and development together. And she was originally from Connecticut and we swooped her back from Utah recently and were real excited that we got her as part of the team previously. She was a project manager at the Salt Lake City Redevelopment Agency and read a lot, led a lot of big city redevelopment projects, so really falls in line with a lot of the work that we've been doing and super excited to have her here and being part of the team.
Great. Thank you.
So wanted to dive into Pleasant Valley, the RFP, and before we get into the real specifics of the RFP, we put together a little proposal just to kind of remind everybody of kind of where we were, where we're going, and some of the things to talk about tonight. And kind of given a little bit of context as well on some of these pieces. So we got a sensitive clicker here, so I'll do my best. All right, if you want to go to the next slide, John.
Is the power up?
No, that definitely would have been a good idea. Two master's degrees and I don't check the power up first.
Here it.
Yeah, still. All right, well, next slide. So again, we're going to try to do this as we move forward with a lot of these projects just to give some context of the timeline, how long we've been working on these items. So again, back in two thousand eighteen, the Elwin Tree School closed, has been vacant for a few years. We had previously gone through an RFP process, which we've discussed before, and now we're looking to kind of move this RFP process ahead. Next slide. A few details just on the site itself. As a reminder, we're looking at approximately sixteen point seven acres. It's zoned multifamily residential. And questions have come up a number of times about some of the requirements within the zoning as it deals with our Water Resource Protection District, which requires that twenty percent of the total land area remain as natural space. There's three existing buildings on the property, so that's what we're looking at as we move forward. Next slide. So I don't expect everybody to read this slide. This is not any new information, but I want to kind of give a little context of, you'll notice the little star that says we are here on there. We're only about halfway through the second phase of kind of how we move forward. And, you know, people often ask, like, how quickly can we move these projects through? There is a lot of steps in order to go from the start to the finish as we move forward here. Again, no new information, kind of the big tabs here at the Greenwood Property Review, the blue identification of the public benefits, getting to the next of, you know, identifying the project concept and developer partner selection, and then that last one is kind of the legal agreement and then the project approvals, which, you know, each one of those has its own set of criteria and steps that we do because we often start asking questions about, well, what about this or what about that? And a number of those items are often dealt with either earlier or sometimes in a later phase. So I just want to kind of think about that as we're moving forward through the process of looking at these RFPs and where we are in the big picture of things.
Point of information.
Your question?
Can we zoom in on this a little bit more? Just can't see it at all and it's not in our packet. And if perhaps this could be sent out to us after so we can review it because it has not been reviewed.
Sure. And again, this is not any new information. This is basically putting the whole TOPE process and our RFP process just into a different format so we can actually look at all of the steps in one place. So nothing new. You have all of these requirements of what is there, but we were happy to share this presentation, which we just kind of wrapped up doing today as, as, you know, we're trying to look at different ways that we can explain some of this information. Next slide. So as we're looking at really, you know, what are our next steps, what are the things the council is looking for here in opportunities and goals for the site? We know we've heard over time about some of the recreation needs in this area, creating housing within the area. Again, you know, we're going to kind of keep talking about that six thousand four hundred and fifty units of all housing types, adaptive reuse of the, of the site, as well as looking at our town defined excess property goals. So again, things that we're thinking about as we move forward through this. Next slide. And, you know, one of the thing I, one of the council members asked on the, the last discussion we had about the Gold Star Highway property, when we're thinking about what does this do for the town from a revenue perspective? So right now, all of these vacant properties give us no money in tax dollars. Triton Square, we're expecting about one point two million. And from Pleasant Valley, depending on the types of use, we could again be looking at over a million dollars once there's something actually built on the property. Next slide. There have also been some questions about the types of housing and housing demand that we have within the town. You know, we often hear questions about, well, who's the housing supply for? Questions about affordability, affordable deed restricted, affordable not deed restricted, and then, you know, larger market rate discussions. So this was a graphic that was from our housing market study. So again, nothing new for you, but just trying to bring this to the forefront of what is driving this demand for housing in town. And, you know, one of the things that I try to equate, housing choice and housing prices is, I think, an easy comparable is to the automobile market and what happened during COVID because supply stopped. What do we see happen with used cars? The prices skyrocketed and most of our new car lots were vacant and because there was nothing to buy, so prices just kept going up and up. That same thing is happening, has happened and is happening now with the housing market. But with the housing market, we don't have nearly as much choice as we do when buying a car. We can get a car, truck, Jeep, minivan, a sports car, whatever you want, but we can't do that with housing. So that, a lot of that has been building up for over twenty years, so that's what's driving the six thousand four hundred and fifty units. Next slide. And then kind of bringing things together as we get into the RFP itself, thinking about the benefit to the town, the preferences in that RFP, the design guidelines, or, sorry, the development guidelines. When we spoke about Groton Heights, we talked about the use of sustainable, sustainable building and site amenities. We talked about the use of a project, project labor agreement, affordable housing percentages over ten percent if the proposal included housing, and affordable housing at different income limits if, again, if the proposal included affordable housing. After the meeting for Groton Heights at the direction of the manager, we included all of those items into the Pleasant Valley RFP, so we didn't have to kind of have those discussions that we could see the consensus of the council that these are things we want to see probably in all of our RFPs moving forward. So that's the baseline of where we are right now with the RFP. Happy to get into any other details or any discussion of items that members of the council want, but one kind of last takeaway unless, you know, Paige or Corinne has anything to add is as we're putting these, these, the request for proposals together, we want to keep it, again, these are development guidelines. We don't want to say you have to do exactly this because we're, we're looking for some creativity, but we want to let the development community know what it is that we are looking for and how that is then going to direct our preferences as we're reviewing proposals, which is in a later phase. Okay?
Councilors, do you have any questions, comments?
Councilor Gase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question on, and of course I lost it. Looking for it. Is on page ten, it has number eight adjacent parcels. It says an adjacent five point seven acre vacant property, zero Pleasant Valley PM. PIN number is there. It's currently listed for sale by a private owner via Pequod Commercial Brokerage. The parcel was created by virtue of a private court ruling, not by subdivision approval, whether subdivision approval on this property would be required. Prior to submitting a site plan application is unclear. The adjacent parcel is only referenced since it may offer benefit to a developer's project. We have mentioned about, I'm assuming, because I've geeked out on GIS fewer, admittedly, I know this property, I know this adjacent property is north of the woods of the Pleasant Valley property. Is this also, is that land also supposed to be required of the twenty percent protected status in its natural state?
That is land that is not owned by the town.
Yes.
It's owned by a third party right now.
But if someone developed it, would that also fund the Water Resource District?
Yes. So if, if somebody added that to, similar to what we saw with Gold Star Highway, it wasn't just our property, they, there was private property that was brought to the table. That would be part of the entire development application. So the twenty percent isn't just for our land, it's for whatever the application is. So if they brought that five acres into it, well, then the twenty percent would go up because it would be the five acres plus our acreage.
Now, through the mayor, my concern with, this property is currently on the market, correct?
It was on the market. Not sure exactly of its status at this point. Clarification, the last time the council went through this process and we received proposals, we did have a developer that had pursued this land, and that's why we made reference to it. It is not sold, and it's my understanding that the owner does desire to sell, but I don't know if it's currently listed.
Okay, because, you know, that, because my, my concern would be, the only concern with that is, you know, one of the prospective developers just buys the piece of land before we complete our RFP process, and then they're not the selected developer by the town, and then they hold the grudge over and just hold the land. And so it could be a possible non-opportunity. Has there any been discussions for the town to purchase the land and just sell it altogether? Through the mayor.
Go ahead, take that one.
I think that would be a good option for us to do. How long it would take us to do that? It would take a while. Yes, in an ideal world, it would all be part of one piece, but, you know, in a market, supply and demand, and if one person gets it and their proposal isn't that good and somebody else gets selected, they're not going to want to hold on to a piece of property that has little value to them without that. So are they going to want to make a buck or two on it and maybe then sell it to, or option it to that preferred developer? Without us owning it and taking control of it, I, I think that's something, you know, it, it's a risk that's out there.
Well, I thank you for that response. I just, I just thought of it and I wanted to kind of just put it out there and just kind of clear it up. But it would not determine from not supporting the RFP as proposed. I know we had, as a council, discussed our ideas and I've read this thoroughly and you've managed to get in pretty much all the ideas. So I thank you for your work and I will be in favor of the motion on the floor and thank you for your work.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, Mr. Reiner. I'm fine with this. These are all the changes basically we did with Groton Heights. So everything in here, I think you, you brought over and it's making a nice template that we can use, I think, on other properties. The only addition that I would add in here is my pet peeve, which is there's no site plan. I think these things should have a site plan, some map that shows what the piece of property looks like. I, is that you have a Connecticut map, but there's no, there's no site plan in here. So I guess when people look at this, they have to go online. I think it should be, the document should be complete with everything that's, that's needed, even though it may not be detailed enough for a developer, it does give you the idea of what's going on and for discussion purposes.
Valid point, and there definitely will be a plan. I just want to point out page nineteen of the RFP or one hundred, page one twenty-eight in your packet, section eighteen references attachments and section A references property map and card. That is, that's not attached in your current copy, but it, it would be. We have a placeholder and we would, we would attach that map.
Okay. I just, I think it's just nice, even in this, is the public document that will, anybody in the town can download this and look at it. I think just, I would just, I mean, you have several things in here, but I think having a site plan is always useful, so.
Yeah, no, we'll certainly include that. I believe there's also, I'm just looking through the RFP. Yes, that's a market study. I believe that there's actually a web link. Yeah, so resources on number eleven on page fourteen of the RFP, right at the very top. Following resources are available on the project website. We also store, you know, the environmental site assessment, the phase one, which anybody who does this is going to want to dig through that, property card and maps as well as the appraisal, so, but we can include a site plan.
Yeah, I'm just thinking more for the general resident that might have interest, just to kind of know what's going on, can download this, print it out, and pretty much everything. Everything else is here. You know, I mean, we don't, most people don't need some of those attachments other than the developer, so that's all, just add a map of the site. Thank you. I'm in favor of this.
Uh, thank you. You know, we've been at this for some time for sure and we've seen some developments and things come and go. With that, I, I can agree with Councilor Jones, you know, I saw those attachments and then I didn't see them, so I was like, so for me, I do think that that should be sent to the council to see. I mean, if we're trying to approve something, we can't approve something if I not get a chance to see it. So I appreciate the hyperlink, but I think it should be a cover sum. It should be a complete package when coming to the council and it should have those attachments in here for review. That, that's my understanding. I can't hand in a half paper, so for me, like, I would like to see what those attachments look like, because now tonight I'm attaching my name to something saying, yes, I fully vetted this RFP. So for me, I can't fully vet because I can't see those attachments, what they look like, if I have any suggestions for amendments. So I hope that those come before us at some point, I guess, the town manager, you know, that, that's what we're tasked to do with and we should see all of that. I am concerned, I don't think there personally is enough conservation protection in here. I think, you know, we, we say that we don't want to demand anything, but, you know, we are in control of the land. Once land is gone, you can't get it back. We have a chance to do right by our community and make sure that we're putting out the best RFP possible to target the least and the most vulnerable folks that need affordable housing overwhelmingly. I'm going to say it over and over. I was saying it way when it wasn't really cool at the time on the council when other projects were being vetted that maybe didn't come to fruition. Some have started, some have not, and affordable housing was not. My push, my goal as an elected official is to make sure that every person in our town, not just the people we're trying to attract to come here, we need to retain the people who've been paying our taxes and have been here, and they are looking to downsize into affordable housing, and some folks are falling on hard times and can't live here any longer. I want to see RFPs that are strong, that speak to our constituents in this community that need affordable housing, mixed income housing. Nobody should have to live in what is considered low income housing, and you shouldn't have to know it from the outside eye. Nobody in the community should say, oh, there's the low income housing. We have an opportunity with a large vast piece of land which is on the bus line, it's close to the military base, it's going to hit that working community. As was stated earlier, EB is not only applying six figure people working there, there are people making twenty dollars and less. We need sliding scale homes that make it so that everyone lives as a community from the top six figure person down to the person making thirty thousand dollars. I don't see that in this RFP, and that concerns me because that's something I've been advocating for, for about six years now. Also, the environmental aspect. We can say we want to see carbon, decrease in our carbon footprint. That's attractable. We have a chance to say that. Let's put it in there. Let's not be afraid of what person may or may not come. Let's give it a try. Let's come with a strong stance of what our community wants. I'll take my second turn later.
Mayor, this is the last version of the RFP. This is essentially the map that would go in there. This is, you know, wouldn't really change unless you change the color of the outline. And then.
All the other attachments are actually in there, C, D, E, F, and G, which are, it was A, which was the property map and card, and then attachment B was a section of the zoning regulations. Those are the only two attachments which were not included.
And this is the property card? And these are under the planning departments, such as the website, of our website? In terms of adding. In terms of adding anything to the RFP, of course, we have to go through this process to add things on, we're not adding, you know, we're not guessing, you know, we don't want to keep guessing on what people want, we want consensus, so it wouldn't make sense to add anything further before coming here.
Point of information?
Your question?
We did do a session where, unfortunately, we work on a consensus space, so councils made suggestions, but not everybody goes in, so there was a consensus.
What is your question?
I asked, I'm getting there. My question is, there was a consensus session, was there not?
Yes, I mean, consensus was included.
Right. So again, it's a chance for the opposing side to speak to their point, just to clarify.
Point of information is just to simply ask a question and not put in your personal opinions, and to basically add more comments.
Point of information?
Thank you.
Point of information?
What is your question?
I'll just restate it then, I, I just want to clarify, did we...
You just did, I think we're okay.
But your comment on the end is...
Councilor Rusk has the floor now? Thank you.
I'm being cut off, and I feel that to be dis... So I'd like to call a point of order.
Your point of order, Councilor Guyez.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you.
May I finish my, my, my...
I believe I have the floor.
I'm confused who has the floor because I wasn't finished, I was cut off, so I'm asking for decorum.
I did not recognize you for your second point of information.
Fair enough.
Councilor Rusk?
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you so much for putting everything that we discussed last time into this. We discussed retention of trees, which is under 12. We discussed all the additional community benefits, including use of sustainable building and site amenities, use of project labor agreements, affordable housing percentages over 10%, affordable housing at different income levels. I think that really addresses a lot of the concerns that's all under 13, so I think those address a lot of our concerns. Two quick questions, one is just a random, page 12 in the RFP, it talks about the Tom, sorry, Towns Robotic Club meeting there, do they still meet there? I thought they moved to Mary Morrison.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The Towns Robotics, did they move to Mary Morrison, or are they still at Pleasant Valley?
Last heard a few weeks ago, they were still working on the plan to move, so as far as I know, it hasn't changed.
So, and my, thank you, my other question would be, if you could bring that map back up, can you just tell me where the other property is that we are discussing, the privately-owned property?
I believe it's up to the northwest, or the, the upper left corner, is that right, John?
Yeah, I will touch the screen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, the pointer works on the wall, it's not on the screen.
Okay, thank you. I'm very excited to have this move forward. Again, my children attended this school, not in 18, but thank you for moving this forward. I'm excited to get this property sold and get it back on our tax rolls, so thank you so much.
Do you have any more questions from the councilors? Councilor Boarder.
So what protections are in this part of the RFP thus far, as far as like, are asked, like, what things are binding at this point, if we move this forward? And what things will have a chance to come back?
So at this point in time, we're putting out there what your preferences are through the development, let's see, I want to make sure I'm using the right terminology, through your development guidelines. Where things become binding are, if the manager goes back to the slide deck, and that really tiny little chart of, kind of, there are four columns on there, that last column, that fourth column, when we get into legal agreements, that's when things start becoming binding, when we have a purchase and sales agreement.
Point of information, can you zoom in on that, because I, again, stated I couldn't read that, so I'm not able to read that fourth column.
So that fourth column, the way it reads is legal agreements and project concept approvals, and this is the, the whole section where the town council negotiates a purchase and sales agreement. So we didn't put this together for us to kind of go through point by point on this, but more is as an example of the process that's in place today, and just how long and onerous it is, and to kind of talk about how there are certain items that happen at certain stages, and that binding items happen at the purchase and sales agreement.
Mayor, can I just add on to his answer?
Go ahead.
Just add on, just remind the council that from here, it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, RTM for comment, and then those comments will come back to the council. So this isn't the last few of this.
Okay, so my other question is, the percent of affordable housing that's in here, is that a ask, or is that a requirement, based on the way it's written here?
It is an ask, it includes that affordable housing percentages over 10%, if the proposal includes housing, and these are development guidelines. So this is, we're setting a preference of what the council is looking for, and we'll see what we get from the development community, that we might see some with housing, we might see some with other uses, we may see some with higher percentages of affordable housing, we may see some proposals with lower percentages of affordable housing, and...
Yeah, we're good.
And once the council receives those RFPs, then, sorry, this is the RFP, once you receive those proposals, too many acronyms, then you will review them, score them, grade them, and through a committee, and then it'll come back to the council.
So it's fair to say that someone could put a proposal in that does not have affordable housing in there at all? Because it's not a requirement, is that correct?
Somebody could put a proposal together that has no affordable housing in it at all, correct?
And so for me, if we're saying a minimum of 10%, I think we should own it. The folks that came before us, that I'm speaking up for, as taxpayers of this town, have stated overwhelmingly they are struggling, and we should make a requirement that a minimum of 10% should be. Again, it was stated that the housing market, we meet the state requirements, that includes, my understanding were the naval barracks, military housing, senior, but when you actually strip those numbers down, and I played around them a little bit, I don't have an exact number, but I haven't been presented with it either, ballpark, what would you say the percent is of affordable housing for families with children?
Off the top of my head, I don't have a percentage for affordable housing for families, but we have the fifth highest percentage of affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. There's a need for housing of all price points in this town, and the example that I gave before about the automobile market, if we don't meet a housing price point at any of those kind of price points in the market, the other price points are going to gobble up housing and price points around them. So if we only supply affordable housing, then that's actually going to create a problem where people then don't have housing to grow into as the life circumstances improve. If we have too much housing that is not affordable, then we also have a problem there. But again, all those other military housing, barracks housing, they're still meeting a need within our community, because the base is here, and there are people out there that qualify for that housing, and it still serves a real need.
What I'm hearing there were families, folks with children and elderly parents that live and cohabitate together cannot find housing. And when I was working with the women and men and children in Branford Manor, that is one of the only low-income housing complexes with 400 units. Outside of that, unless you're disabled or a senior, which I think we need more of that as well, there's nowhere else to go, okay? Military housing, I lived there, we got a stipend to be there from the federal government, and it was, you know, offset tax-free and all that. I, there is a need. But my concern is we're not meeting the needs of low-income families, and that's what I've heard overwhelmingly, and that's what I'm going to state overly on the record. As a person who grew up here, we had three different middle schools, and now we had to move around, children, we're busing them all the way from Branford Manor to the Mystic Side, because we're trying to diversify our schools. If you afford, if you build the affordable housing in not a segregated area of town and only the city, and 400 units blocked, you would diversify your town by building it in a diversified way, and we would not be paying it and putting out the backs of the students to be bused further away from their home of record, where their parents may be struggling to get them there by car on the other side of Mystic. If they miss their bus, they don't attend, they don't have a ride. So we have an obligation here and a chance to do right by that. And so if we do not meet those needs, when is the last time we've built low-income housing for families in the town abroad? That's my question.
We haven't built a lot of housing in the town? I don't know the last time we built a housing.
I would say probably the 60s, if my research is correct. So as we look to meet that need of that 6,000 that you stated, when have we met the need of the affordable housing? We are not growing our affordable housing as fast as we are in the other ways. We have an obligation to do it now, and I think this should be an ask, not, a mandate, not an ask. Thank you.
Do you have any more comments or questions?
I would like to move an amendment to this.
Your amended motion?
I think it should be a minimum, I personally would like to see 20% required, but if this is the 10, I would say, not a, will they, we want an ask of 10% required at minimum to build. It's land that we are...
Do you have a second on that?
I don't know.
I don't see a second on that. Point of information?
I would like to just clarify it before I take some other comments. At least in the packet on page 14, it says that including housing as or in proposal is not a requirement, but any proposal that includes housing shall, at a minimum, include no less than 10% of the units as affordable housing. That is more of a development guideline. When you get to page 16, benefits to the town, those are more of a, we would like, and you would get extra points, basically, you'd get extra points if you did these type of things, such as sustainable buildings, site amenities such as pervious pavements, solar lighting, carbon neutral development, practices in building materials, use of project labor agreement, affordable housing percentage over 10%, if the proposal is for housing, affordable housing at different income limits, if the proposal is at, includes housing, as well as some other things on here that, some community benefits, but also, it is a requirement of preservation and creation of some public, as a requirement, preservation, creation of some public open space and/or recreation on or in close proximity to the property that will be open to and accessible to all Groton residents, and the preference for recreation land would be on-site or adjacent to the Pleasant Valley property, as well as some other requirements. So there are requirements in there for affordable housing. Mr. Bird, did you have something you wanted to...
I was going to point out exactly that.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk, did you have a point of information?
That was my, you made the point that I was going to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Boarder, your question?
Sure, so my question is, the points that are in here would make the score higher, but it's not required to apply, is that correct?
It says you do not have to apply with housing, but if you did, it has to be a minimum of 10% of the units are affordable.
I just want to clarify, because I'm confused now, because my question I asked earlier, a person could apply and not have any affordable housing component in there?
That's correct, because they could do a development, they could do manufacturing, they could do, like Thayer Mahan did, I mean, there's other things that can be applied. It doesn't have to be housing at all, so...
And even if somebody proposes housing, they can give us whatever they want to give us, and how you, the council, views it, that, that's up to you.
Right, and if they apply with housing and they don't fit into our recommended minimal, then it could be set aside as didn't fit the criteria.
Somebody could give us a proposal that does not meet zoning, they can still put that together and the council can weigh it. You know, one of the, I guess, ridiculous examples I'm trying to use, because I feel like it can't really be taken too much out of context, is somebody could propose a giraffe rehabilitation center here, I don't think that is allowed for zoning, but they can still propose it. They can give us whatever they want, if they want to waste their time or put their time and effort into it and money into a proposal, and then they can make that pitch to you. So you might get a giraffe rehabilitation center, I don't know if that's really a reality, but I, I'm trying not to use as many real-world contexts, because I feel like people take them way out of example, and the next thing I know, I'm proposing ridiculous developments in areas of town.
Understood. I would also like to state that I was happy that you have included, which you put in the other one, that any need for an application to be rezoned, it would be the sole responsibility of the developer. That was very important to put in there, that, to lay that out very clearly. You have, as it was already stated, included the things that we had requested from our last one for Groton Heights, and I think this is basically treating them very similar and equally in the requirements that we have heard from our community. And I agree that when you need over, like, 6,000 home, home units, we need all housing, and has been said multiple times, we need all levels of housing. I know we do hear from people about the affordable housing con, you know, population, but there is also, there are higher-level income earners who are also looking to downsize, and they want a certain, they also want something that fits their lifestyle, I guess you'd say. And they are stuck, and I've read many articles about this, that they're stuck in their big homes, because there's nothing out there that they're looking, that they want to move into. So they're staying in these big homes, that basically a big family should be in, instead of just two people that are probably retired that would like to downsize, but they can't downsize to anything that fits their needs. So I appreciate everything you've done, I think these are pretty much done the same way as Groton Heights, and I think it's been equal and fair, and I appreciate that. So with that, and no more questions, we will take a vote on the 2024, 3-4, I'm sorry, 324-1 Pleasant Valley School Property Request for Proposals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Helped.
So that passes 7 to 0 to 1. Up next is...
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Up next is 2024-322-3 BYOB Ordinance Update. And that is, let me get to the right page first. That is on page 134, there's no motion. So the town held a public hearing on June 4th, 2024, for a potential change to the town's BYOB ordinance. The proposal change would be a change of hours of prohibition of alcohol at BYOB establishments from 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., extending the hours by 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. The committee as a whole will discuss the feedback of the public hearing and determine if they would like to move forward with a change to the ordinance. Mr. Bird, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, so we'll open it up to, councilor comments. Councilor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What, if this is passed, will it solve?
What will it solve?
What will it solve?
I think, well, I don't want to speak for the mayor's intentions, right now, there's no known issues, it's a potential of holding off or preventing another issue in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, several meetings ago, it was stated that the economic development were not in favor of this ordinance, is that correct?
They were concerned because a letter had been sent to them by a business owner who actually has a liquor license, because he was, he's concerned that it's limiting potential establishments from being able to serve after 10:00 p.m. But as the economic development came here and spoke, they said it's going to, it would potentially affect one business in the community, and that, that's it, I guess, that's what I've heard so far. Mr. Bronck, would you like to come up and speak, because you're at the Economic Development Committee meetings? Would you like to sort of give a gist of maybe a better, more eloquent answer than I can give on, without, I didn't even watch the meeting, I've just gotten feedback.
recommending that the language not be changed. And it is true, they did discuss what is the issue, what is the real problem, and they came to the conclusion that it was a problem that may pertain to one business, one location, and generally, we're not in favor of changing a regulation or an ordinance, rather, an ordinance that would impact the majority of the businesses when we're only dealing with one. That was basically the consensus. Obviously, the Economic Development Commission pro-business, and they're interested in protecting business rights, and in order for increased regulations to be supported, they wanted a direct nexus. They would need to know what is the real problem. If we're going to change a program, it impacts the entire community. So for that reason, they decided that they would vote to, basically, they want the ordinance to remain as is.
Thank you.
Thanks. I know this was brought forward by our mayor as a recommendation. It was stated that at one point, we had a problem at one business. I agree with the economic development. I think if we're truly for development, in my opinion, and I speak for myself, that this could have ramifications down the road. As a person who frequences other communities that are developed in much more unique fashions than what we have, that have different assets that one may seek to go explore, like Cape Cod and things, there's a lot of areas that are open, and they have, you know, outside events and things where it's BYOB, and you have a large screen TV, and outdoor concerts, perhaps. I mean, I know ours here are not, but other places do have options where they do like a beer tent or a BYOB kind of setup, and I think this really just puts us in this weird kind of situation. I don't think that, I feel comfortable as a counselor telling people that they shouldn't bring a responsible amount of consumption to an event after hours. And so that is why I am not in support of it. And I think if there's a problem with a certain business, I don't think one ordinance should be, in my opinion, encapsulating to try to control, not control, but change the pattern of a one business. So for that, I also have concerns, because if that's the case, we would be making ordinance for this or that, and this and that. So for this, I don't feel it's really pertinent. I feel we have other business to handle for me, and it's really not affecting, there's nothing really falling under this currently. So I know it was stated at one of the other meetings, let's just leave it and not move it forward. So I don't think we need to move on this at this time, if there was a problem in the future, perhaps, but I like our free liberties, and I think that we should seek to develop and explore more open recreation options where there is a chance to allow people to have those freedoms and rights as other areas have. So I think, you know, I have to agree with the economic development. I mean, if that's what we're here to do. If we're here to truly grow the grand list, look at ways to develop apartments and recreational activities, that if they're saying this would not be a good scope, then that, have to listen. So that's where I stand on this, and I think at this time, it's not really pertinent for me. Thank you.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Your inquiry?
If I make a motion to table, it can't come back for a year, correct?
Yes. If you table indefinitely. Postpone indefinitely. It is in our little packet book.
That's why I ask.
It's called a motion to postpone indefinitely, and it can come back with six people, six councilors if they chose to, that would show like a super majority.
Within a year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So like after a year is done, it tells me it's six councilors. Okay.
Correct. So are you done with your point of information?
Yep.
Thank you. So I'd like to clarify, I did not make this referral. It was a conversation, I'm going to make it quite clear, it was a conversation that Mr. Burt and I had about BYOB, and it had, the topic had come up, and I said, fine, let's bring it to the council, and we'll let them decide. That is how this happened. It is not a referral by me, but I would like to say that many in our community, many in our community complained profusely about an organization that was a BYOB, and it created absolute chaos in a certain section of town where the police responded routinely, regularly to very, a lot of violence there. Do I think that maybe changing regulation down from 12 o'clock midnight down to 10 o'clock, any future organizations that are similar to that type that called the town and said, what is your BYOB ordinance? Well, we have it till 10 o'clock, might make them skip our town and go to another town. They may not like those terms. That's where I stood on that, because without a liquor license, there is no protection from the state of Connecticut Liquor Authority to be able to even shut down an organization or a business, which the Liquor Authority has shut down places because they have shootings at them, and they have shut bars down because of those type of things, and underage drinking and things of those natures. So I will respect the will of this council, and if they would like to table it, that is fine with me. If they would like to vote either in favor or opposed, I will go with the will of the council. I. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually pushed for this to go to public hearing because all I had heard was economic development is against this, but until I actually spoke to them and we heard from them, I didn't want to end this before then. But I did reach out to the Chair of the Economic Development Commission and spoke with him. I did reach out to Chief Fazaro with Town Manager's approval and spoke with him. At this time, I agree that this is, I wouldn't support moving this at this time, but I feel like we have done our due diligence in researching this now, having a public hearing, and at this time, I would like to make, I would agree with a motion to either just not move forward with this on consensus versus a motion or a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Counselor Perret.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am not going to put a motion on the floor because there's no motion to put forth, and to, I'm okay with the timing of what was said forth, and we did have economic development come and speak to us, and it would probably affect other businesses that are doing things. And we set this reason for this, we set the BYOB for a reason. I believe that business is no longer here, so is that, may I ask, Mr. Bronk, is that correct?
Well, that is correct.
Okay. So the concerns that we had are no longer valid, so we can leave this as is because I feel like we're targeting a business, and I don't want to keep bringing that up. It's in the past, it's been handled, it's moved forward, so we keep things as is. We do not need to put a motion on the floor, we do not need to put, we do not need to table it or postpone it because there's no motion to be had at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, and I don't hear a motion, we're going to move on to the next topic. So the next topic is 2024-578, BYOB FYE 24 Supplemental Funding Request.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Due to a conflict of interest, I will be recusing myself from this discussion. However, I will stay and run the clock, so I'll be up here but not participating in the discussion or voting.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So will the superintendent be attending?
No. Neither the superintendent or staff are available this evening.
They are not?
No, they are not. So I request to make just an opening statement, if I may.
Yes. So as an ex officio member, would you like to introduce yourself and give a little synopsis of what you'd like to say?
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counselors, Town Manager Burt, my name is Jay Whitloff. I'm the Chair of the Groton Board of Education. I'm joined by the Vice Chair Beverly Washington. Other board members are in the room. We have Mike Whitney, Ian Thomas, Jen White, Adrian Johnson. I know that you can't all watch every single Board of Education meeting, so I just wanted to briefly explain what happened last week. Thank you for taking the time this evening to allow me to explain the action that the Board took last week to come forward for a supplemental appropriation. We had hoped to come in on budget this year, I had shared that hope, but for various reasons, I'll share, that it's looking less and less likely, and so here we come before you. And I know you have a responsibility to our citizens to do your due diligence, and while I don't have a complete financial presentation this evening, staff is working on that, so I'd like to just share a few broad observations. As we have shared at various times through the year, we've had multiple issues beyond our control, some revolving around property damages. We had water leaks at Fitch and a failed hot water heater. The water leaks cost over $32,000, the hot water heater over $72,000. We installed an ADA compliant elevator at Fitch for $9,000. We replaced a generator at Groton Middle School for nearly $8,000. We suffered a cyber attack estimated currently $85,000. The deductible insurance is $100,000. Along with other items of full accounting of which will be provided to you, we are currently at over $274,000 for these unexpected events. As everyone knows, when they look at their electric bill, utility costs are up. We have exceeded that budget line by over $534,000. Special education costs are up over budget by $371,000. Now, we do have various drawdowns in terms of incoming Medicaid and special education reimbursements. The town has been regularly turning those funds over, and at one point, we were close to balancing, but then our expected Department of Defense supplemental, which was due in mid-May, did not come in. We are awaiting word whether it will be here by June 30th, or whether it could be used to pay this year's expenses if it comes in past June 30th. The payment was estimated $515,000. We have reached out to Congressman Courtney's office for assistance in determining when it might come and what the final amount might be. Again, the DOD supplemental is based on the number of military-connected children in the district. This has been referred to in the past as one that we won't be qualifying for next year, but we did qualify for last year, and it's that deferred payment we're waiting to come in. Another challenge we have this year is with health care. Claims are coming in much higher than projected, as we've shared with you, and we are now in the 25% corridor that protects the account in times like these. We began the year with a healthy reserve, but that has now been drawn down. Another point I'd like to make is that some projections show that if the Board and the town were to separate on health care, and we were to go for something like the state partnership plan, it's been estimated that the Board could save money. Now, Mr. Burt keeps me honest in that we also, the Board and the town, receive prescription drug rebates because we're self-insured, and so those projections can be complex, but the point is that while there has been talk about our going our separate ways, it could, it would actually cost the town more if we separated. And at the end of the day, we're all the same town. Nobody wants that tension between the Board and the town. And so we would, however, like to work with MDG, the consultants, to make sure that the town and the Board have the best health plan, you know, that we could have, that would serve our employees, and also that we're not paying too much. This plan, my understanding went in about 2000 is where we became joined as a self-insured Now I'd like to come to the subject of Impact Aid. Because Groton is a military-connected community, we take account every year of how many of our students are connected to the military or defense-related industries. Every year, we ask families to fill out forms showing that association. This year, the town received $1.7 million above what was projected, but after netting out certain state reimbursements, the district calculated the town received $1.399 million more than projected for Impact Aid. The Board then voted to request this excess aid to cover any shortfall and also to potentially shore up the insurance reserve. Let me be clear, we are not claiming that we are entitled to Impact Aid. The Board is only entitled to special education excess cost reimbursement, which the town does pass along. But this Impact Aid is related to education, would not result in any increase to taxes, and has already been deposited in the general fund. Further, let me be clear, the deficit is not $1.399 million. That number represents the excess Impact Aid, which might be used, the excess, to shore up the reserve. It's obviously your decision whether that move would be prudent to stabilize the joint health care plan. Again, we look forward to providing you with detailed financial information to support the request, and we're also preparing detailed responses to the questions posed by the mayor, along with any other questions the council may have. And again, thank you for your time. I know you spend countless hours worrying about the town and making the best decisions for our citizens.
Thank you. So I don't know if you have the ability to speak on behalf of your Board, or if we should have the superintendent here. So this evening, what I might suggest is, if there are councilors that have questions, that if they would like to propose their questions, so that the next time you come with a superintendent, that we can have a dialogue with answers to our questions. I sent a list of, I don't know, 19 questions last week. I had also sent, I don't even know how many, there might have been 13 in there, 13 out of the 19, something of that nature, I can't remember at this time. I sent them on May 2nd. I sent it again on June 3rd because I hadn't received a response, and then I followed up with even more questions. So if there are any councilors here that have questions that they would like to propose that can be taken back to the Board of Ed, back to the superintendent for our next meeting, then we can get the answers and have. So this evening, what I might suggest is, if there are councilors that have questions, that if they would like to propose their questions, so that the next time you come with a superintendent, that we can have a dialogue with answers to our questions. I sent a list of, I don't know, 19 questions last week. I had also sent, I don't even know how many, there might have been 13 in there, 13 out of the 19, something of that nature, I can't remember at this time. I sent them on May 2nd. I sent it again on June 3rd because I hadn't received a response, and then I followed up with even more questions. So if there are any councilors here that have questions that they would like to propose that can be taken back to the Board of Ed, back to the superintendent for our next meeting, then we can get the answers and have a dialogue. That's how I would see this.
Point of information? Your question? My understanding is that the superintendent nor the Chair or Vice Chair can speak on half of the Board, just like no mayor or council member can speak on our council.
Your question?
May I finish?
No, you're speaking and explaining things, but you have to, I just need a question.
Okay, let me take a minute and form my question for you. So I was getting to my question. I will start from the beginning because that's how I speak, I have to go back. My understanding is no mayor, council member, Board Chair, Vice Chair, or superintendent can speak on behalf of a Board. So I don't feel, for me, I just am questioning having...
Your question. What is your question?
Can I please, point of order, please?
No, you're explaining your thoughts.
Point of order?
A point of information is where you ask a question, and it's not to explain yourself or to add an opinion in there.
Point of order? May I have a point of order, please?
What is your point of order?
Can you let me get to my question, please? With all due respect, finish, may I have decorum?
No, you are not asking a point of information. You are outside the bounds of a point of information.
I asked for a ruling, then, because I was getting to my question, that's how I speak, and my next thing was to close with it, and you're interrupting me, and I asked for decorum.
You're asking for what?
Decorum, and I'm asking for a ruling of my point of order. To allow me to finish my statement, please.
I'm not sure what you're asking for, though.
I'm asking for a ruling on my point of order.
I think your point of order is not well-taken.
I'm requesting a ruling beyond the Chair of the Mayor.
From what I understand, she is challenging the ruling of the Chair. If you are in favor of the ruling of the Chair...
You have to.
Oh, I have to? She needs a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any second. I don't hear a second.
That's fine. Again, I will state my question, if you could please kindly let me finish my question, that's how I speak, and I'm asking a question. It is my understanding, my question is, it's my understanding that a mayor, nor a council, nor a Board of Ed Chair, Vice Chair, or Superintendent can speak on behalf of the Board. Is that true? So my question is, bringing the superintendent without all the other voices that make up her representation, it's kind of, I just feel like we should have everybody. So can a superintendent speak on behalf of a whole Board?
Again, you are putting in a lot of what you feel, you said even the word "feel", and opinions.
I'm speaking for myself.
This is a point of information.
My point of information can...
I think you are now out of order. Again, are you able to speak for your Board? I'm not sure if you have been given the authority from your Board.
I can only speak on what we've already voted on.
Thank you. So what I will say is, any councilors here that have questions, for the Chair of the Board of Ed to bring back, so that in our next meeting, we can have a full dialogue with answers to our questions, would you like to propose your questions now? Councilor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the Mayor, I would like to see a list of all the unforeseen's, how much they were, and when they happened, the dates. That is bringing us to this question tonight. That's what I would like to see.
Councilor Parker?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As a follow-up to Councilor Pacino's thing, my question is, why was this not brought forth earlier? Because each month, doing budget and watching the budget, we would have known by April that we were in a deficit. So can we figure out why we're waiting until June, almost June 30th, before the end of the fiscal year, where the request has to go through not only us, but the RTM? And RTM's beating tomorrow night. So can we find out why this is such a delay? And the dollar amount that is being said is $1.399, that you're short? But in hearing your discussion, it does not sound like it's that much that's short. I want to know why, and can you give us clear, I want to run a good running report that's not already done as of what the accounting system is showing. I want actual numbers and what the payouts were. Because this coming in at $1.399 is making me question the dollar amount. So what are we really short?
So, through the Mayor, may I respond to that with the knowledge I have from last Thursday's meeting and the Board meeting?
You may.
So, the interim business manager is still working on the encumbrances and the expenses for the end of the year. The reason that the Board set the number it did is it matches the excess Impact Aid, and the idea was, you could then vote that with some of it going in to shore up the insurance reserve, or you can just do the exact number of the deficit. And that's the number we don't have tonight.
Okay. I'm going to continue. My concern, thank you for responding, but my concern is that this should have been done before the mill rate was set because of how we handled the money. Because technically, you guys are front-loaded the money, because the Impact Aid doesn't come in until the end of the federal fiscal year, which doesn't end until September 30th. And the reason why I know this is because I do grants. It's October 1st to September 30th. So you're submitting your Impact Aid paperwork on October 1st. You're not going to see that until after, almost to the next fiscal year. So we are giving you the money up ahead, so to ask for this $1.399, I have a problem with it. I want firm numbers, and I want to know if we're paying late fees on everything that was not paid in a timely manner, if that can be checked into, please.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the Mayor, last Thursday, you received a summary sheet of all the issues. Seventy-five percent of this summary sheet is in the negative.
Can you, Mr. Burt, can you put that on our screen? The sheet that is in our packet.
This is in our packet. So from what I understand, this is the first time that Board members had seen this sheet and what is going on, what the effect is going on in the Board of Ed. So my question is, this was last Thursday is when we received this. We sent you $87 million based on this budget. From what I understand, you did not know this when you made this budget. What set of numbers did you use to create this budget? And were the numbers in this budget accurate, being that you only found out a few days ago what was really going on in your department? So I would like to know, were these numbers real? Does anybody know about this? If you have all these losses going on, you were creating a budget based on, I don't want to say false information, but unknown information, and we gave you $87 million based on a budget that from what I understand, and the way this is going, you did not actually know what was going on in this budget. So I would like an answer to which set of numbers is the real number, and if you didn't know this, why did you create a budget that on numbers you don't have, you weren't aware of? So I see a lot of this as a failure of communication from the top, from the leadership of the Board of Ed and the School Department, not giving accurate numbers to the Board members who are responsible for making this budget. So I would like an answer on, were you using real numbers, or were you using numbers you have no clue about for the $87 million that we gave you? That's my basic question.
Councilor Portelin?
I don't really have a question, other than I think that the Board of Ed members should be invited to defend their budget. And quite frankly, I think you guys should bring up some of the old past Board of Ed members, because to defend what some of the reasoning, because some of these projections were long before some of the new Board members have taken their seat. So my questions are, yeah, how did we get here? Also, I think it's only fair that the other Board members have a chance to speak to their side. As tonight as a council, what we put in RFP is a consensus of the council, not every council's vote. So by having one person speak, it's a consensus that you speak of, but you need to hear the opposing side, which we're not going to get in that report, and I think that's vital. So I think it's important that we invite Board of Ed members that want to come to speak to the budget. I think it's important, and I do think that, you know, for me, and I speak for myself, we have an obligation to educate our kids. At the end of the day, if I misspend my money, I have an obligation to feed, clothe, and house my children to the best of my ability. So where this went wrong, we can sit here all day and nitpick, but if it's short, it's short, and if that's what's happening, I stand behind education, and I want it funded at the highest amount. Later, we can talk about where the shortcomings come. Right now, we need to get to brass tacks for me and fund education. That's my goal. So I think the Board of Ed members should be present. I know that you guys went through different finance departments, so I think you guys should actually, my question would be, you should have a forensic audit, and I think the council has to request that. Is that correct, Mr. Town Manager?
Either the Board of Ed can request or the Town Council can request.
So if it's truly a short calling, the answer to this with a new Board coming in to me, would be ask for a forensic scrub and audit, and that has to be done if there's voting on, and there's no one that can say it can't happen. So we can talk about what's not there, but what we have to do as a town, as a taxpayer, is fund education. So if there's extra positive revenues that have come in to the Town Manager, what would that affect for us to transfer those remaining funds that were given that we don't have to give? What would that do to us to get it back? That's my question.
Are you asking...
The Town Manager.
We're supposed to be asking the Chair of the Board of Ed, submitting questions to them to come back with answers for us.
But I think we have some questions with ourselves, so if that's fine, if we don't want to ask that, I'll send that on an email, then, to the Town Manager.
I mean, he can answer, but I'm just like, tonight...
Sure, that's fine.
Tonight, we're supposed to be asking, stating our questions, so we can have a good deliberation. A question has been posed, Mr. Burt, would you like to answer it?
Could you repeat it? It seemed rather broad.
So the Chair, my broad statement was, the Chair stated that there was extra funds that don't have to come back, but that were given to us in what was over what was anticipated. So the town has these funds that were given in good faith for education, necessarily, in my opinion. What can the town do to kind of make those funds go back?
Well, I don't think you want to tie it to a particular fund. You know, that was taken into consideration, those numbers, when you, the Town Council just had that whole discussion on using the fund ballots for the mill rate. So, you know, it would have been nice to have the request before that. But I think whatever the Town Council does, it shouldn't be tied into those excess dollars, because all that does is pay back a little bit of what we're paying. And, you know, it's not like they're paying for everything and then getting something on top of it. We are heavily subsidizing.
Thank you.
So I guess my thing is, I think Board of Ed members should be present, all of them that can, because I think we need to hear the opposing sides. One person speaking does not represent, they only can speak to what the majority consensus, you're not getting the opposing side, and we need to hear that. I think a forensic audit needs to happen, should happen right away. As soon as there was any discrepancies, vote goes on the floor, forensic audit. Get it out there, get it clean, get it up there. That way, this back and forth, for me, I just want to fund education, and I want the, I feel we have a right to ask of the town, but I also think that we need to trust, and if there's not the trust there, and there's something else going on, then where's the forensic audit? But if there is no forensic audit, and no one's proposing a forensic audit, and there is surely a shortfall, then let's fund education, let's get down to it, figure out what we need to do to make sure our kids have a proper education. Again, that's my question. I'll take my second turn a little bit, but I think all Board of Ed members should represent their budget.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for coming tonight. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I am looking at page 141 of our budget, or our book. You are $32,000 in the red for administrators, 412 for non-sert aides, 401 for substitutes, clerical is 282, and we go on and on and on. So my question is, when were you made aware of this? Why were you not made aware of this sooner? I agree that you probably need a forensic audit, but I would like to get the regular audit back first. There's been a lot of questionable financial decisions made, not by the Board. The whole thing with the school meal programs happened without your knowledge. What policies have been put in place to make sure that things like that don't happen again? What policies have been put in place so an entire 75% row, I'm guessing on that number, percentage of numbers are in the red, and we aren't at the end of the year yet? So I would like to see, before we dump more money on a burning building, I'd like to know how you're putting out the fires first. That's my main thing. I will not oppose a forensic audit. As soon as we get the audit back, I would like to see that first before we move forward, but I think that that is going to definitely be a necessity. Am I correct, Manager Burt, that if we increase, if we do a fourth quarter transfer, which is basically what this is, it would raise the MBR for education if it went above the 7.9%, which it won't? But if we did, say they had a 0% increase, and we did a fourth quarter transfer to give them more money, would that raise the MBR, the minimum budget requirement for the following year?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I believe so. I do have our Finance Director, though, on, too, might like to get her concurrence.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, so any supplemental appropriation made to the Board's line, if it would have put them above and beyond, would increase their MBR?
So for this year, it wouldn't matter, because you already have a 7.9% increase on the following year, but I'm concerned if this becomes something that we start doing, if we don't have a tight rein over our finances, we are going to raise that MBR, which means we are raising taxes across the Board every year. On the back page, there was, well, before I move on, sorry, on line nine on page 141, health insurance is at zero, but yet we talked about on the back page that health insurance claims are up and that you're using your corridor. So how is that at zero and not in the negative? And when it says on this back page, health insurance budget was reduced by $725,000 during the budget process, what budget process are we talking about? Because we're talking FYE '24 on this page. So last year, was it reduced? Is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Director Morrison, has her hand up?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify with the health insurance payments, that when the monthly claims come in, they are paid from a completely different fund, and if there are increases or higher amounts than what were expected, they're not hitting this general fund health insurance line. I just wanted to make that clear. Any of the health insurance costs that are pertaining to either Town or Board of Ed go to a completely separate fund. And the health insurance portion, my understanding, is that the Board of Ed budgets in amount at the beginning of the year, and they pay us a 1/12 portion every month, or the idea is that they will. But regardless of whether those claims came in higher or lower, that does not affect that health insurance line. Is that correct? Chair?
That is, my understanding is that we budget a certain amount, once that's zero, that line actually can't go negative. Once that's zero, that line actually can't go negative, because then it's drawing down on the reserve, and then ultimately, the corridor.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Portelin?
You know, again, for me, I respect all the hard work of the members of the Board of Education, and again, there might be some unanswered questions that you guys may not have, but at some point, I think we need legal representation. I think that the Board of Ed has its own attorney, and I think, right now, is the time to pull it. I think there's been a lot of talk and a lot of rumor, and I say rumor because I don't have facts, and I can't, I'm not going to sit here and say what you guys are not doing. But the way this is being presented, or some have said, is there's mismanagement. And when words start like coming around like that from the community, out, people are saying, well, where's this and where's that? I think it's time for legal representation, and I think that your, my request is that your attorney is present to start looking into what ramifications and necessities. I also think that the law, and that needs to be brought in, because when I was skimming through the state law when preparing for tonight, there has been some things where Board of Education's had to take the town, because we do, at the end of the day, have an obligation to fund education. And so where are those parameters? There was, I'm not saying it's happening here, but Bridgeport or another state had some money that was somehow gone, and they have to fund education. We have a federal requirement to fund education and a state requirement. So if we're not meeting certain things, what do we do? Where's our fallback come from? You've got to dip in somewhere. So I think we need to know what our options are here as a council, what are options from the Board of Ed side. So I think the town legal and the attorney side from the Board of Ed need to come forward, and it needs to be put out. And I, again, I think we don't need to wait for an audit, because once that comes out, that can help simultaneously, from what I read online. So the request needs to start now to ask for the forensic audit. But I think already, we're at that point, because there's all this talk of, well, where's this, and how do we get there? And it's uncomfortable talk, for me, because my, at the end of the day, where I stand is, if we need it, let's fund it. But I can understand if there's questions, and if there are questions, then we need to propose that. I guess the town manager, at one point, I asked, before we did the mill rate, if we could move funds over, and I was told at that time we couldn't. Is that correct? So I had asked, saying I was seeing the numbers not adding because of the medical shortage, and we were told that we couldn't make any movements at that time.
I believe the gist was, you can't, sorry.
Go right ahead.
I think the gist is, you couldn't adjust the current year's budget at that time per town charter.
Okay. So that's what I have. I just think Board of Ed members need to be present. I think town attorney with a write-up on what, and if we are short, what legal actions and things can be done to make sure it is funded, and if there's missing items to, and I think a forensic audit should already be. So my request today is, I'll put it on the record, I'm requesting a forensic audit of the Board of Education's finances on top of the audit that's already being done, for the protection of the town, welfare and well-being of the students, and the town at large. I don't know if we have to vote on that. John, does that have to be an agenda item, or how do we move forward?
I will respond to you on that. There has been much talk from many people about a forensic audit. You are not the first person I have heard this from. It has been requested from other people that I make that an agenda item. So in the future, it shall be an agenda item, and that's what I have told other counselors who have that, have come to me and discussed it with me.
Well, thank you. That's news to me, I didn't know, so thank you for that. And that's all I have. I hope to work with you guys to figure out ways to get whatever is needed funded and figured out. Thank you.
Chair White love, do you want to respond to that?
I just wanted to, I know I'm a little bit late. I'd like to respond to Counselor Jones. When he asks, what numbers were we dealing with? We were dealing with last year's budget. That didn't include the unforeseen. You know, we didn't foresee the leaks at Fitch. We didn't foresee the $72,000 hot water heater. We don't put an extra amount in the budget. Maybe we should. Maybe like, the town has a vehicle fund, right? Maybe we should be putting aside money every year for water heaters. I mean, we are, we have created a budget ad hoc committee to look at, what should we be doing going forward? But these were truly unforeseen. The cyber attack, you know, it, we're still seeing the ramifications from that, and the cost that it took to ameliorate that. Again, that's not in the budget, and so it was not budgeted in the budget that we presented to you on February 28th. The utilities fees, I did not know, in January of 2023, when we were putting together the budget that is ending now, where electric rates would be. I don't know where they're going to be at this time next year. Those utility fees were just beyond our scope to, you know, to forecast.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you for the Chair. Line items one through seven, except for number two, actually, 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 7 are all over budget. I believe some of these are salary personnel. How are they already over budget?
Mr. Bur, can you put this on the screen?
And my other question is, oh, time. Other question is, the personnel that were under ARPA, are they included in this overage?
In this overage, no.
Can you please zoom in on this, so we can see? I think you're discussing salaries. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can we zoom in on salaries? Thank you.
So. Okay, again. So if those questions could be answered, and my other question is, is the 125 being carried over till next year's budget? Are those people still staying?
No. No, all of the ARPA-funded positions were eliminated.
Okay. And that ARPA funding has been closed out? As a, will it be closed out as a September or June 30th?
My understanding is that all ARPA funding closes out by September 30th, but I believe that ours is already closed. Again, I would defer to the business manager for the exact status of those accounts.
One more question about the, one more question about the ARPA funding. Have you received accounting paperwork to see how it balanced out, too? I just want to make sure that we're not have an overage in that, and have to figure out how to pay that back, if we've overspent in the ARPA funding, too. So only because the rest of this has been spent, and I just want to make sure that we didn't overspend in that account, too, because we will have to pay that back. So if you can get that information, I greatly appreciate it. But again, if the numbers could be rerun again to confirm that this is accurate numbers, I know you said that electric costs and some other costs, but some of this, professional services is over, other professional services, repair and maintenance, I understand to a degree. Transportation, yes, we know that gas went up, but salaries, I have a problem with, because nobody was paying attention to it, and that is key to everything. So supplies, all of it, can we just confirm that these are actually over as a, probably won't be able, is it bi-weekly or weekly?
Yeah, they are working on a final with all the encumbrances for everything that we're liable for through June 30th. That's what the business office is focusing on right now, is getting that accurate end-of-year figure.
But it won't be accurate, because you actually don't have the bills yet by September 30th. So you're encumbering money without actually having a bill first.
Well, and again, probably, Dee could speak to this better than we can, but encumbrances are only made when you know what your liability is, and it is the job of the business office to determine everything that has been incurred by June 30th. That's payroll, benefits, but also any purchases, sports trips on buses.
I just want to ensure that there's invoices to match what the encumbrance would be. So I would, as it's your budget to review, I would double-check that on your end.
My understanding is when, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
That was her.
No, I know, but I still should ask to respond. My understanding, and again, the Finance Director for the town may want to chime in on this, if we make an encumbrance to an account on an expense, if a purchase order, and then ultimately, a check against that purchase order is not cut, that encumbrance is released back. I mean, these have to, these have to be tied to actual expenses.
That's correct.
And that's what he's working on now. So if you have, you know, a bill for a special ed service, you know, there has to be a purchase order, it has to be encumbered. If the director of athletics books a bus tonight for a sports team, he has to create a purchase order. That all has to be documented and encumbered before the end of the year. And there is a lot going on, you know, toward the end of the year, on all these expenses. However, the superintendent did put controls in place that new expenses had to be approved by her, I believe, beginning in April. Site budgets were frozen, and they had to come to her, like, for anything with regard to graduation and that sort of thing, to get approved.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
I can't, I ran out of time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chair White love, I do recognize that things come up that we can't deal with and are unexpected, so I'm fully aware of that. What concerns me is, this did not happen yesterday. The 75% of your summary items are over budget. That has taken a long time, and somebody has not had their eye on this budget, and the board has not had their eye on this budget. Even in the last five days from this-
Point of order.
Your point of order.
I just asked for decorments, making accusations. I've heard board members state very clearly they were watching that budget, so I don't think that's fair to say that Board of Ed members were not watching the numbers. So I just ask that we not imply intent.
Please do not imply intent. Thank you.
Thank you. So on this sheet, electric expenses were $437 over $895.
Which line item are you on?
This is line item number 37.
Can you please scroll to line 37?
Five, we're five days after this sheet. You told us just a few minutes ago that the electric expenses are now $554,000. So you've jumped over $100,000 in five days on your electric expenses. So my question is, I'd like to know what kind of policies and procedures you have on monitoring and managing your money, and what new ones you are thinking of putting into place, because my worry is, good money after bad money here. That there's a, is there a culture, is there something going on with how you are managing your money? And if we just keep giving you more money, and we don't change the culture of spending that's going on, that's generating a list like this, then we're not, nothing's good is going to happen out of this. We're just going to keep pouring money in if we can't figure out how to have some controls over this. So I would like to, that's my question, is, I'd like to have some answer on what new procedures, because clearly, the current ones you have aren't working, what new procedures and policies are you putting into place to get some control? So three months from now, we don't have another 75% of your summary sheet is in the red. So I think that's vital. I would just, on question number eight, on the ones that Mayor Franco sent, which is, please forward a two-year, year-over-year comparison of healthcare reserves and the corridor. I would like to see that, a monthly breakdown. I believe we might have asked for that, but I'd like to see a monthly breakdown of the last two years of your reserve balances and your corridor balances. So we can kind of see, you know, I do think that healthcare has played an enormous role in this, and you've been squeezed from a lot of different sides. So it might be illuminating to see where that started to happen, and maybe get some control over that. So I have those two questions. So fiscal policy question, the reserve and corridor question. I think that'll, enough on your plate for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I have some questions as well. I have sent them. You don't have to get your pen out, because I already sent these to you.
These are the questions.
I'm just going to make them public, because I have sent them to you in an email, so I'm going to sort of go through them very quickly. I'd like to detail any requested funds, how, please detail how any requested funds would be used, including proof of need for each use. Please include the 2024 budget to actual report that shows the line items that are at risk of going over budget that require the additional funding. Number two, please provide copies of documents, including in the orange folder for the Ernie Koschmider issue brought to the Board of Ed on the May 27, 2024 meeting, and any emails between the Superintendent Austin and any Board of Ed members or staff concerning the issue. Number three, please provide copies of documents, including, included in the orange folder for the Ernie Koschmider issue brought to the Board of Ed at the May 27, 2024 meeting, and any emails between David Flag and any board members or staff concerning the issue. Number four, middle school pergola info is attached, including the building permit, site plan, and a photo of the outdoor learning classroom pergola at the middle, Groton Middle School. Our understanding is that the middle school structure cost $135,000. Please provide details on this selected vendor used, verification of proper bidding procedures, total cost of construction, and all sources of funding by amount. Additionally, please verify whether any grants went through the required Board of Ed, Town Council, and RTM approval processes, as well as the approval voted on by the Board of Ed to allocate the funds for the structure. If a grant was used, please forward the terms of the grant. An additional attachment shows a recently pulled building permit for a pergola at Charles Barnum. The permit was issued on May 13th. Please provide details of the structured, I mean, of the selected vendor to be used, verification of proper bidding procedures, total cost of construction, and all sources of funding by amount. Also, why is Sam Patrick listed as the property owner on this permit? Did he personally pay the permit fee online, or was it paid by the Board of Ed? Additionally, please verify whether any grants went through the required Board of Ed, Town Council, RTM approval process, as well as the approval voted on by the Board of Education to allocate funds for the structure. If a grant was used, please provide the terms of the grant. Please verify that all budgeted payments for the healthcare insurance plan for Board of Ed expenses were paid to the town in FYE 23. Also, provide the budgeted amount to be paid each month, along with the amount actually paid each month, especially the monthly amounts labeled as general disbursements for the break, for the breakout sheet provided to town finance with each check. Number seven, please verify that all budgeted payments to date for the health insurance plan for Board of Ed expenses haven't made to the town of, for FYE 24. Number eight, please forward a two-year, year-over-year comparison for the healthcare reserve and corridor. Number nine, attached is a screenshot of a partial GPS staff professional development agenda that included paid time staff time, paid staff time, with the opportunity for staff to participate in a political letter-writing campaign to the Groton elected officials on the representative town meeting regarding the school budget. Was issuance of this document authorized by the Superintendent Austin? Would you kindly forward that list? Number 13, a Board of Ed member publicly stated this calculated, stated he calculated the student-to-teacher ratio, and it was fine, it was low. And the superintendent has said people should check ratios. Would you kindly send me the Board of Ed agreed upon student-to-teacher ratio? As well as any numbers used to come up with a calculation to produce the ratio which year was calculated, and are there any special circumstances, which teachers or students were included or not included in the calculation? Number 14, Town Finance has been asked if $515,000 of DOD funding has been received recently, which it has not. Per the interim business manager, Dave Flag had informed him that this amount was expected to be released based on the information he viewed through an online portal for the grant. Please provide verification of this expected funding that the Board of Ed is to receive. Please provide detailed information on the DOD supplemental funds received over the past, over the last three fiscal years. Number 15, it was noted the schools received DOD supplemental funds that go directly to the school and not to the town first. Do you hold this money in a separate account from the routine anticipated reoccurring DOD funds? Number 16, in the 66th Board of Ed meeting, it was stated that the district had a lack of overtime controls in the 2024 budget, and that it has since changed. Please forward the new policy, date of implementation, and the emails showing who was advised of the new policy. Number 17, a lack of encumbered expenses was noted, and the staff had a lot of work to do to bring the records up to date. Please send the purchasing policy prior to May 2024 and the new purchasing policy that will be, that will encumber purchases properly as well, as was discussed in the 66th Board of Ed meeting. There are other district funds that could, are there any other district funds that could be used to offset the Groton Public Schools District 2024 budget overspending? As Board of Member, Board of Ed members stated in the 66th Board of Ed meeting, they did not see the overspending amounts coming, they were caught off guard. It was stated that there, going forward, there would be regular monthly budget updates. Would you also include the Town Council and the Town Manager with those monthly updates as well? And note that upon completion of the 2023 audit, the auditors will make a presentation to the council for approval and acceptance, and the board will be invited to attend the Town Council's audit presentation and participate during the school audit portion. The Board of Ed will be notified as soon as the presentation is scheduled. For which I notified you, I believe it was just today, that the Board of Ed will be invited, I believe it is June 9th.
July 9th.
July 9th, yes.
What is it?
July 9th.
July 9th. I'm so sorry. Are there any other questions that you would like, anybody would like to ask the Board of Ed?
Counsel Merritt.
I have just one question. It's kind of redundant and old, but I think it relates to what we've seen. The money that was allotted for the roof on Charles Barnham School, has that been used yet? Has that roof been fixed yet? And what state is it in now if it hasn't been?
We did just approve the educational specifications to send that out to bid.
And you can still repair that roof with the $1 million that was allotted?
We received an engineering report.
Yes.
When they forwarded us the educational specifications, and that is their recommendation.
I would assume that when the $1 million was asked for, that was a proposal by engineers. That's what was needed. And I would still hold to the fact that you can repair it with that. Maybe we should see a document on what the outcome of that repair was and the expense of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Russ.
Thank you. I just want to say personally, I feel like you all have kind of been handed a platter that none of you expected. At least that's how it is being perceived. But somebody knew what was going on. And my question is, how is the board going to move forward from this with policies to ensure that this doesn't happen again? Who is going to be responsible for the fact that we're in this situation? Because somebody is responsible. Decisions have been made, and whether that was shared with you or not, I'm not sure. I feel like Counsel Bordalyn mentioned that there's a lot of new counselors, or a lot of new board members who may not know about what happened in the past. I want to, before we move forward on anything, I want to see the policies that are going to ensure this doesn't happen again, that you know what is happening with your budget, because I feel like, like Counselor Jones said, a budget was given to us, and first of all, it's impossible to read, but second of all, I don't think it's potentially accurate. I want to know who made decisions along the way. And you talked about the list of unforeseen things that happened. When did these happen? Because they didn't all happen yesterday, so things have been building and building. Your utility fees have been building and building. I mean, that's a monthly thing. I just want a lot more transparency when it comes to this Board of Ed budget, because like you, we didn't see all of this coming. And I'll be honest, if this was on the town side, I'd have a lot of concerns. And I'll leave it at that. But I, my biggest come out of, or takeaway from this is I want to see policies in place so that you all know as a board what is going on before we get to a place where 75% of your line items are in the red. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Bordalyn, you've already spoken twice.
Sure.
Yes, Chair White-Love?
I simply want to say that we already do have referrals to policy, to look into issues that we believe are critical going forward. Policies that will ensure that the board knows in advance about certain things that were done, that they were not advised or asked to approve before. And again, these are pending policies. But we certainly take this very seriously. I'm not here to make any excuses, but all I can say is, yes, those unforeseen circumstances did take place over time, but they certainly, by the virtue of their being unforeseen, we didn't know them when we created the budget last year. And that's really what's driving. Yes, the salary accounts also are driven by things that are related to the healthcare in terms of absenteeism. And so there's some of that connection. But we will get you a full financial report, so that you can see where everything's coming from.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I thank you for coming here and sitting in the hot seat, because I think it was. And I appreciate you and your board and all that you do for our community. And I feel like we will get through this, but it might be a little bit of a bumpy road. And I feel that it is sort of also all of our jobs as stewards of the finances of the town to ask hard questions and try and get the information all sorted out and figured out, and how to move forward in the best, with best practices and how to go forward. So I appreciate you coming, and I thank you all. So you have a good night. Thank you.
Motion by Chair.
Second.
Motion by Bordalyn, second of the Gaiuski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. That passes eight to zero to zero.
10:14, please.
It is 10:14. Have a good evening, everybody.